Well, good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our city council work session to order. We welcome all of you who are joining us today in person, those who are chiming in remotely. At this time, as we call the meeting to order, we start with item 2.0 is the invocation, which is the prayer. Councilmember, would you like to do it? Councilmember Ingram, all right, if we could, stand for the prayer immediately following the prayer, if we could do the pledge of allegiance together.
Okay. All right, give us a second while some council members make their work. Yeah, okay, thank you. As we bow our heads, Father God, I thank you for allowing us to come tonight as we prepare to do the work of the city. I thank you for allowing us some grace as we took the month of July off. I thank you for the support of our staff to be able to prepare this agenda tonight and future agendas. God, as I ask you, ask, I ask, when we depart tonight, we keep us safe as a storm is approaching. And in your name, I pray amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the glory for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Ingram. Item 3.0 is the motion to approve the agenda. All right, there's a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins, seconded by Councilmember Hare. Discussion on that motion to approve. All right, let's look to you for our votes, ma'am. I just did, so I'm sorry. So, what, you had a discussion?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
All right, look to you for your votes. Jennifer, I did, let's see, all right, got it. All right, motion carries unanimous by those present. Item 4.01, Set of Old Sister City delegation visit presentation. Ms. Chris, how are you?
Hi, sir, good to have you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with y'all. I'm Chris Johnson, as you all know, president of the Fayetteville Senior World Friendship Alliance. And we are preparing diligently for a visit from four dignitaries from Saint Devold at the end of September. They arrive here on the 25th and will be here until October 1st. We've been working diligently to try to come up with a good agenda to show them Fayetteville, have them visit Fort Liberty. We also have an office call with the commanding general already set up. So, we're trying to pull together their schedule. What I'm coming to you for is something I've been asking for two years at least. I've been asking for a budget, a line in the budget for, and I'm going to reduce it, on your sheet that you've received, I think it's on your iPad, I asked for $12,500. I'm going to give you a bargain, I only want $10,000 now. But I've been asking for that amount for over two years and have never been told until tonight, until this week, that this is what I needed to do, was come to speak to you. So, here I am, tell me what I need to do and I'll do it, to make sure this sister city program doesn't fade. Because it belongs to the city. It was the city council that signed the proclamation on September 27, 1993, to adopt Saint Devold France as its sister city. So, this visit that we have coming on the end of September, it'll be the mayor, Mayor Rene Steiner, who Mayor Colvin writes a letter to every Memorial Day. We have the deputy mayor, Raymond Schweitzer, deputy mayor, Elan Lutier, and the historian Pascal Flaus. This is the first time that a sitting mayor from Saint Devold has come to visit Saint Devold, or Fayetteville. So, it's pretty exciting. The 27th is the 30th anniversary of the relationship that we have. And we are hoping to be able to do a sign unveiling. You all approved us to change the name of the sign of Walter Street to change it to Saint Devold Avenue. And we're working, trying to get that sign changed so we can do an unveiling on the 27th, followed by a reception and then that evening a dinner. In your notes, you'll see that we had asked to go ahead and do something at Skyview. And we've decided to do no host at a local restaurant to reduce the cost and also just make it easier for us to coordinate. One of the big expenses that we have for them will be their meals while they are here and their lodging. Let me explain to you, when I visited Saint Devold in 2022 as a representative from Fayetteville and as the sister city representative, they covered all of my lodging and all of my meals. They've done the same thing for other delegations from Fayetteville that have gone to visit Saint Devold. I know several years, many years ago, they housed people in people's homes and then they put you up in a hotel. They're extremely generous. And it's almost embarrassing, I had someone say, it's almost embarrassing how generous they are to us when we go to visit them. And I just feel like we need to roll out the red carpet for them as well. So, I need your help, though, in doing it. We've been diligently trying to fundraise to come up with money. But we can't come up with the entire amount that we need to go ahead and house them and give them meals. I've been told by Pam McGill that the city will provide transportation for them to and from the Raleigh-Durham Airport, which is so helpful. But we'll need some other assistance with their visit. So, I'm asking for $10,000 to help assist with this visit and make sure that, you know, obviously, if we don't spend it all, I will spend it like it's my own money. And I know how to make Lincoln scream. I can pinch a penny. So, I can assure you that those dollars will be used wisely and economically and just want your support for the $10,000 to be able to go ahead and support this visit. Are there any questions?
We did have a couple of questions. So, I see four rooms, six nights at McPherson House. Where's that located?
That is right on Hay Street. It's a bed and breakfast, so the benefit to that is one that's centrally located to downtown so they can even walk to things that they will need to link up when we give them a tour of downtown. As well, it provides their breakfast right away.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Chris? Councilmember Ingram and then Hare.
Councilmember Hare was before me unless he's okay with me going.
My question, question has been answered. I was wanting to listen till I started to stroll down in my, so I'm good, thank you.
City Manager Hewitt, where, if the council were to support this, where, what, what fund would we be using?
At the moment, I'm not sure, but we would be finding money, it's council's interest.
Okay, and then, so I'm making sure I'm understanding this. If we support this, this would be in the form, in the formation of us cutting a check to the organization or us saying we're going to allocate and spend up to $10,000 of our own efforts?
Correct, I would, we would take a look along with my finance staff at the request and see what we would be able to fund. And we would also be able to follow in the footsteps of Chris and see if we couldn't also help to shave off some costs. But the only thing that I think that the city would not be able to provide and hopefully private donations could, would be if there are receptions in which there's alcohol being served. I was, I guess, lucky enough to be here when we did this last, I think. And we, our big dinner was up at, the restaurant is torn down now. It's right at the top of Bragg Boulevard there, almost near the old Nissan dealership, the barn. We had it there at the barn. And the food was great, but the location wasn't the best. So, hopefully, we will be able to really roll out the red carpet for these dignitaries this time.
And my last question, not to say that it probably is, but have you, have you done any private donor ask?
Yes, we have, yes.
And what does that look like? Have you been successful?
Yes, so we had a person who knew that we were working on this and had been the recipient of their hospitality, give us a $1,000 check.
Okay, thank you.
So, we do anticipate, they're French, so we do anticipate serving wine at meals. And we understand the city cannot cover that as well, so.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Manager, you said they had it here the last time at the barn. Did we fund their trip then?
Remember the actual details of that, but it was a much more robust effort. That was also, I don't know if that was the lead up to the city's anniversary. And we had, had a whole issue about having Lafayette ride in on a white police horse. I'm getting PTSD flashback of all of the things that we did then that were so unique. We had to get a waiver from the city attorney to allow somebody to ride a police charger. So, this would be a lot less painful, but it sounds like it's well organized as the last one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Benevente, I saw you, you were here, but you disappeared. So, Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I've got a few questions and a few statements. So, we're celebrating the 30th anniversary of this. And there's a lot of people out in the audience that don't remember in 1993 what a big deal this was. And I think, believe it or not, it was before my time sitting up here. But I do remember it being in my twenties of how big of a deal it was and how hard it was to get it and how proud everybody was. I had a lot of the same questions that Councilmember Thompson had. But I know on that 30th anniversary, and it come, I know back then that the city had probably put some funds in it with, is that correct?
This year is the 30th anniversary.
I'm talking 30 years ago when we, when we tried to get it.
My memory is not that strong, but I would say that we probably did.
Yeah, and my point is, it was such a big deal and so many people that sat on this diocese 30 years ago were very proud of this. So, it's something that we need to continue because they worked hard for it to make a representation for us. So, that, that was the only thing I had to say, thank you.
All right, before I go to Councilmember Benevente, I think he has a motion that he wants to do. You know, this is great and I had, in fact, there's a request coming to you, council, at some point to kind of expand our sister city. I think a lot of cities use it for commerce, not only fellowship purposes, but, you know, if there are any trade opportunities. And we're starting to now get some, some interests from some international related companies. So, I think this is something that we need to look at holistically as well. But with that, I'll go to Councilmember Benevente for consensus motion.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I'd like to move that we instruct our staff to make that request for $10,000 happen for this 30th anniversary occasion.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Benevente, seconded by Councilmember Ingram. Discussion on that consensus. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes on that. Jennifer, we're showing nine out of 12. So, I'll cancel that, can you do it again? Let me cancel that, because it's showing 12 people voting, there shouldn't be. On my screen, okay. All right. All right, let's see if you hadn't voted. All right, let's see, Councilmember, Councilmember McNair. All right, got it now. All right, will that show on the television monitor? All right, all right, motion carries unanimous, two and zero, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right.
Sir, if I may, I wanted to add one more comment about the business. We, Rob Patton over at the Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development is actually working with a company that was looking for a foothold here in North America that was notes I had brought back from my visit to Saint Devold. And the fire chief of Saint Devold wants to engage with the fire chief here. And I've been trying to track down Chief Hill, so.
Go find him.
They are actively looking at beyond cultural engagement. So, thank you very much for your support.
All right, thank you. All right, so council, we'll move to item 4.02, report by PB Mars Audit and Financial Results. Mr. Hewitt, who will that, all right, hello?
Good evening, Mayor, Council and staff. I am pleased to introduce Robbie Bitner, partner at PB Mayor's, to present our findings for the FY 2022 audit cycle.
Thank you, Jody. All right, so can all, everybody see this? Oh, good evening. I hope y'all are ready for a really, really long presentation. We're going to go through this page by page, you know, we're pushing 280 pages right here, so. First off, on behalf of myself, PB Mayor's and Mr. Willie Cooper Jr., who's our subcontractor for this, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to continue to serve the city. I'd also like to say a special thank you to the staff, not only the finance staff, but the rest of the staff throughout the, throughout the city that helped us through this process. Quite arduous this year with the new ERP system being implemented. So, there was a bunch of extra stuff, not only that they had to do, that we had to do as well. And they were very much, very much appreciated the amount of effort that they put in. So, I'm going to jump right in. Our job as auditors is to give you an opinion on the annual comprehensive financial report and on each major fund or what we call opinion unit, as well as the governmental activities and business type activities as a whole. These are your components of your act for here, which is all these separate little tabs in here. You have your management's discussion and analysis, high level comparisons. You have your government-wide financial statements, which is still high level, but a government has a whole little bit more detail. Your major fund financial statements, your notes, your required supplemental information, and then your other supplemental data, which is all included in parts of our opinion. And then the final pieces are the statistical section and then the compliance section, which I'll talk about here in just a few more minutes. So, this is the most important part. We can issue four types of opinions as your external auditor. And of the four that you can receive, you receive the highest level assurance that we can offer, which is the unmodified or clean opinion. Happy to say that that, what does that mean? That means that we believe that your financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting standards as promulgated by the Government Accounting Standard Board. A lot of, a lot of acronyms that we can throw in there, but nobody will know what they are, so we're all good there. Do a quick dive into the fund balance. You know, this is what most people want to know, what is your general fund? What do you have available to spend? As you see, there's five different categories here between non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and then the unassigned. That unassigned fund balance is what you have available that's uncommitted, except for your capital fund and policy that's there, that $18 million. So, in the end, on top of your policy and everything else, we still have, or the city still has $4.1 million in the general fund that is completely unencumbered as it relates to your policies or anything else outstanding. And may I add, if anyone has any questions at any time, feel free to stop me and I'll be happy to go there. One other item I just wanted to bring up related to the financial statements is the analysis of your debt. So, the city, as you can see, has a legal debt limit of $1.1 billion. As of right now, related to that limit, the, the city only has about $53 million outstanding. And as a percentage, as you can see, related to other large municipalities in the state, you're really in good shape there. So, gives you, it's just telling you from a health perspective that it looks good. I mentioned before, the last section in the act for is the compliance section. In addition to our opinion on the financial statements, we are required to issue our report on your compliance with laws, regulations, grants, and contracts and as well as identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control that we identify in the course of our audit. We did have, I'm going to jump around a little bit, just to make it a little clearer. This is our report under government auditing standards. We did have two items that met the requirements of a reporting under material weakness. The first one being the late audit. As you are well aware, the audits in North Carolina are required to be filed four months after the end of the year with a one-month automatic extension. And clearly, we are well past that point. As, as you can see, that is primarily attributable to that implementation of that new software and understaffing in that area. So, the second item that we had, that we identified was related to FEMA revenue and receivable from a project that began back in 2017. There was some additional appropriation of dollars that did not, that FEMA had not signed off on. That just needed to be cleared out of there. Overall, doesn't mean that you won't get the money, it's just that FEMA has not obligated that money at this time. So, any questions there? So, all righty, keep right on rolling. In addition to our report on internal control and compliance, in accordance with the single, federal single audit act or the uniform guidance and in accordance with the state single audit implementation act, we are required to issue our opinion on your compliance with, with your federal grants and your state grants, be it uniform guidance and state single audit act respectively. Happy to say that we had an unmodified opinion on your compliance there as well as did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control over those federal or state programs. The last opinion that we provide is over your passenger facility charges that happened at the airport. This is an FAA requirement. We are happy to say that, again, we did not have any significant deficiencies and material weaknesses in internal control related to that. And the passenger facility charges schedule is fairly presented, so. All right, last, last thing we'll go through is what we call our AUC, coming from Statement of Auditing Standards 114, but it's AUC Section 260, which is our clarified standards. These are our required communications under auditing standards that really arose from the Enrons and WorldComs of the world back in the early 2000s. There are several in here, but I'm really going to hit on a couple of high points, the ones that you, that I feel like you really need to be aware of here since you do have a letter presenting all of these. The first one is the adoption of Statement Number 87 related to leases and Gatsby Statement Number 96 related to subscription-based information technology arrangements. These are new standards that resulted in a lot of work by your staff as well as on our part. But what you will see is new assets and liabilities on your books related to these items as both a less or and a less e. So, as you see, there will also be additional footnotes in your financial statements related to those items. Last couple more things on here, we did have one audit adjustment related to that FEMA revenue item. We did have a couple of uncorrected misstatements that we believe, believe, as well as staff, believe that it is immaterial to the financial statements as a whole. And then we did not have any significant difficulties working with the team. As always, your staff here really does go out of their way to respond to our requests in a timely manner. And then the last piece we'll go through is in, I think, the last year, when fiscal year 2021 was the first year that we had these. The local government commission, and when we are preparing the data input form to submit to them, they now have what's called performance indicators of concern. These are items that if they, as, as simple as put, is it pops red based on the information that's put into that data input form that comes out of your financial statements, that it will require direct communication from the city council to the LGC related to those items. The city did have two items that popped on there this year, one being the late audit that we've already discussed. I'm going to go through here, see if they turn red. We don't even have control whether or not they turn red. And then the other one being related to the material weakness around the FEMA revenue. So, if you look in your financial statements in the compliance section, there is a corrective action plan that was prepared by management on how to correct these items. And you, and the city has 60 days to respond to the LGC from this presentation date. So, with that, there's one other item that's not in our presentation here. And back last year in October, we issued a, a report related to the local government employees retirement system. And when that report is related to the procedures that the state auditor required to be performed related to the census information provided to the local government employees retirement group. And we did not have any issues with anything that we found there. So, without, I'll take any questions unless you would like to go line by line.
Yeah, I do have a question for you. So, one is, I appreciate the information. The audit for this year, I see it ended June 30, 2022. Are we working on the one that, for the fiscal year that just ended?
For 2023, we've already, we cannot contract legally until this one has been closed out. We are in plan to, to do that. And I believe Jody and their staff in the finance department are well ahead of where they were last year at this point. And I would say, like, again, this was primarily related to the implementation of the Oracle system. And anytime you have a new system implementation, it does take significant amounts of time to bridge the two systems.
Can you go back to that page where you had a list of, I guess, the, your breakdown of the fish? Keep going, I'll tell you, not that, keep going.
Back faster. You tell me when to stop, sir.
Yeah, I will. That, yeah, go back, go, go back to the previous one, I mean, right after that. Yes. So, the FEMA dollars, right? So, basically, there were some things at the conclusion of the hurricane we did, assuming FEMA would reimburse, but you're saying FEMA hadn't signed off on it, although we showed it as a revenue coming in?
Correct, so FEMA is kind of a unique bird when it comes to the non-exchange transaction revenue recognition rules. I don't want to get too in-depth into those. But in essence, if they have not obligated the funds, then it cannot be considered federal revenue. So, until those funds are obligated, it doesn't mean that they won't pay it at the end and come back and, and adjust it. But if it's over the initial obligation, then they do not have to pay it. And we are, you're not supposed to recognize it as revenue at that time.
Okay, and how much was that?
Eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
All right, and so that's where you're saying that, that the revenues were overstated by that?
Revenue was, that those expenditures were incurred on the FEMA-related projects, one specific FEMA-related project. However. So, in any case, this is not all a one-year thing. This, this was slowly recognized over the course of a couple of years. It just so happened that it was of a magnitude that we, we recognized it this year, so.
All right, and the final question, I know you had a, a list of peer cities with their debt level.
Yes, sir.
So, what is the, what is the statutory limit for that?
So, the statutory limit is 8% of your assessed value is your statutory limit for general obligation or installment debt related that is funded by your general fund. This does not include your enterprise, you know, any revenue bonds, any spec, any, anything in the enterprise funds for the service, nothing related to airport, nothing related to wastewater, anything of that nature. But this states that your legal limit is $1.1 billion and you're currently using 4.6% of that.
Oh, okay, so you go by the legal limit, so they're using, Charlotte Fences is using 13% of their legal limit?
Correct.
So, that's what, okay, all right.
So, that percentage over there is literally just the total outstanding over the legal limit.
Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to go in depth a little bit to try to give some explanation. But I just want you to explain the. want you to explain to them, as you explained to us prior in this audit committee, about how you, they figured out that formulation with and without electricity. Maybe that will help them understand those numbers a little bit.
There's none of those comparisons in this particular presentation, but I'd be happy to explain it to you. So, in, in the state of North Carolina, you have obviously municipalities that have an electric system and municipalities that don't. And this LGC couples and groups, municipalities, based on, based on spending in the general fund, as well as if they have an electrical system or not. And what is the big kicker there? As y'all know, you receive every year from PWC a pilot. It's a payment in lieu of taxes. So, these are dollars that you would not be getting from, if, say, Duke Energy owned all the lines in town, you would be getting a, a tax rate on the value of all those lines, but you don't, so you get a pilot there. So the comparison of tax rates between a city that has a, a system and a city that doesn't is not, is not, you're not comparing apples to apples, because the utility is such a huge piece of the assets there. I mean, PWC has, what, a couple billion dollars in assets out there that are not being taxed. So.
I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, if there's no other questions.
Yes, sir.
Our motion that we accept the PBM Mayor's presentation as presented.
Alright, consensus motion by Councilmember Thompson, seconded by Mayor Protem to accept the audit as presented, discussion? Alright, send now, we'll look to you for your votes. Missing one more. The motion carries unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you again. Thank you. Alright, council moving to item 4.03, affordable housing project updates and direction. Mr. Colley.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Chris Colley, Economic Community Development. Unfortunately, I've got to do the same joke that our previous presentation did, except for, I don't have a punchline. This is, this is going to be a lot. But I'm going to try to get through it as quickly as I can. We've got a lot of very exciting projects. I'm, I'm hoping that you guys are excited as I am about the work that our team has been able to do. So, just a quick recap of how we got to where we are tonight. So in June 20, June of 2021, we adopted our Affordable Housing Study that showed that there's an extreme need for rental units at below 30%, which is our extremely low-income population, and that overall, there's been a decrease of 10% in homeownership across our community. Kind of to sum that up, out of about 60-ish thousand households in Fayetteville, 20,000 of them pay too much in rent. And so it's, it's a significant problem here, just like it is in most large municipalities across the country. In June of '22, we came back with new policies and procedures that, that allowed for us to work with a lot of different kind of developers. City Council has done a great job over the past 20 years of working with one specific kind of developer, which does large-scale, low-income housing tax credit projects. But across North Carolina, cities have been opening up to work on more smaller-scale developments and more targeted and niche markets, particularly with nonprofit organizations that provide supportive services. And so we opened up that, that policy to allow for some of that. Right after council gave us a thumbs up, we launched that program in July of last year, and for the past 12, 13 months, our team, including my assistant director, Mr. Freeman, have been meeting with developers in the community and outside of the community, talking about how housing gets developed, affordable rental rate, rental units and single-family homeownership, and talking about how we can use government funds to help with those projects. And then that, that, all of that work for the past 13 months kind of led us to tonight, where we talk about some of the projects that we've got in the pipeline. And the end goal of tonight is really to, to get a consensus from council that you like this project, you like the amount of money that we're talking about, and you want my team to move forward with finalizing the details with our legal department and, and our outside legal counsel and our other consultants that work with us on this stuff. So that development process can be long. If you come into our office and you've got everything with a bow wrapped around it, and you give us a perfect proposal and say, I need this much money and everything that's going to happen, we're still talking six months before we start actually entering into a legal agreement and potentially breaking ground on a project. If you come in and you need a lot of consultation from us, and you haven't quite found a piece of property yet, and you're going through the process and just learning, realistically, you could be 34 months out. And so we know that because myself and Mr. Freeman went through a whole process mapping effort with our team where we laid out, what's the quickest we can move through a step in the process versus what's the longest amount of time that it could take? And so that got us from that six to 34-month timeline. I say that because we have a lot of folks that come in the office and expect for us to respond. If any of y'all work in real estate development, even in the private sector, banks don't respond that quickly. So, so real estate development takes time no matter what, but we're taking everybody who comes to us seriously, and we're trying to help them move their projects along from their idea to their ultimate goal. The developers got a lot of work to do on the front end. They've got to find property, they got to do a market analysis to show that they can rent that property or sell it, they've got to do a site layout and get architectural drawings in place, they've got to go through our technical review committee to make sure all of that makes sense in accordance with your UDO and with our, with our technical folks who review that stuff. Then we've got a bunch of legal requirements. We've got federal legal requirements, we've got specific grant legal requirements, we've got North Carolina legal requirements, there's a whole bunch of legal requirements involved. And so we've got Banks Law Firm to help us out to navigate some of that, along with Attorney McDonald's team. And then ultimately, what my team does is make sure that we don't bring you anything that's not a sustainable financial model. And so part of what we do is we look at those projects, how they're structured, to make sure that, due to the financial structure of them, they're not going to fail in the next couple of years, that they have legs and that they'll be long-term sustainable. So we got five projects to look at tonight. You can see here, this is kind of a spread of all the funding that we have available right now. I'm not going to go through these super in detail. With the American Rescue Plan, we got what's called Home ARP, which is a specific amount of money that had to go towards a project aimed at homelessness. Every year, we get a couple million dollars, depending on what our paybacks are for our annual home program that you all see during our annual action plan. Right now, we've got about 5.8 mil available there. Through the council's actions, we allocated $4 million for our American Rescue Plan towards affordable housing efforts. And then through our state delegation, we got a million dollars in affordable housing development as well. So the projects we're looking at tonight are going to be a, a project from a group called Step Up, which is a nonprofit looking to convert motels into supportive housing for homeless. We also have a project called Fayetteville Gardens, which is a private developer who is proposing to buy and rehab a 40-year-old property off Rayford Road. We'll look at these in more detail in a minute. Hillside Manor is a private developer. It gets complicated, they're associated with the Housing Authority, but it's a privately-owned, and they're in need of substantial repairs and ADA upgrades. Then we have a private developer looking to do eight rental units on South Cool Springs Street. And then one of our development partners has a loan with us made in 2009. That loan is coming, is due, and they are asking for us to extend our loan to match their primary mortgage. And so we're going to look at each one of those in detail. Kind of the overview of the, the charts you see here is green, is what we're talking about today. Gray are, are in pre-predevelopment, so we're talking to people about concepts and ideas. We don't have site plans or budgets or anything lined up yet, but those projects are out there. And then black is stuff that's already underway, which right now is our single-family rehab program, our down payment assistance, and Cliffmore Park, which is in a, one of those apartment complexes. So with that, council's got a lot on the agenda. I do have some exciting folks here to talk to you about their projects, but we also understand that there's a lot in front of you. We have Mr. Todd Lipka from Step Up here. He's happy to answer any questions and give a short presentation, but we also understand that council's time is valuable. So I'd be looking for you to let me know if you want me to keep progressing through the projects or...
Well, if you could, I, I, this is the company that I met at the mayor's conference, Mr. Arthur Murray, I think, was the VP, and I'm glad to see that, that it's progressing. I think council would benefit from hearing from that and just seeing some of the things that they showed me at the Conference of Mayors with the hotel conversions. So, council, if you're okay with hearing that particular, okay, alright.
Alright. Todd's a great speaker, so I'm going to ask Mr. Todd Lipka to come up here and, and help us with our presentation.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mayor, council members, staff. I'm Todd Lipka, the CEO for Step Up, and yes, indeed, we're at the Conference of Mayors, and Arthur Murray, who runs our southeast operation, was there as well. So Step Up is a 40-year-old nonprofit organization focusing on housing and supporting chronically homeless individuals into supportive housing. And one of our specialties is motel conversions. Here, we're looking at the night inn here on Southeastern Avenue, which is 140-unit motel. And let me just emphasize first, that this is a tried and true practice of converting motels. What we do is convert the motel unit into a studio apartment. We add a kitchenette, we do a complete refresh, and turn it into permanent housing. And when I say permanent housing, it's actually permanent supportive housing, because we provide on-staff support services that help individuals make the transition from living on the street and sleeping on the street to sleeping in a bed. And that's a very big transition, but I have to tell you, with this rich supportive services, this is an evidence-based model that works very, very well. In fact, our organization has a 98% retention rate for those who move from the street into motels converted into apartment buildings just like this. So this does work with giving people the home they need in the rich supportive services. The, the project is 140-unit motel, and we would have onsite managers, several managers who live there, as well as the supportive services staff. And as you can see from some of these pictures, we completely redo the units, making them into studio apartments with a kitchen, and of course, it has a bathroom, and really make it a home for individuals. As you can see, the outline of our project, and for us, motels make very good conversions, because what we're really trying to do with this housing is create a sense of community. And motels allow that by their design. I want you to know that this is certainly not a one-off. Step Up has a major commitment here in the state, and we're doing similar projects in Asheville, in Greensboro, in Raleigh, and in Winston-Salem. And in fact, the furthest project is 115-unit motel conversion, we're under construction in Asheville, and that will be opening probably at the, at the first of the year. The model we use is a very intensive service model. That is, we have live-in staff, who are the property managers, who are the eyes and the ears, 24/7 for individuals, and we also put on-staff in the motel, supportive services staff, case managers, if you will, whose job is to do nothing but work with the tenants on a day-to-day basis. And we typically have one full-time staff for about 20 residents. And what we're really trying to do is help people acquire the skills of daily living. You know, you don't have to cook when you're on the street, you don't have to clean an apartment, you don't have to really budget or shop for groceries. These are all things we'll do hand-in-hand with each individuals to help them make the change, adapting from living on the street to actually being a housed individual. For us, we focus on the most chronically homeless individuals, those who often have mental health issues, they may have physical health issues, they may have substance abuse issues, or a combination of all of those. And so we're really working to help transition those into productive individuals. And while the goal is not necessarily for those individuals, that they'll transition out and get jobs, full-time jobs, most of them are, have a disability that they're probably going to manage for the rest of their life. And so our role and our goal is really sustained, stable housing over time, and help them reintegrate by engaging in education, maybe a GED, volunteering, and maybe even for some part-time employment. We've done this project, motel conversions, many, many times across the country, across California. We're doing projects not only in five cities here in North Carolina, but also in Tennessee. We've also have a large presence in Georgia and Florida as well. Just highlighting, it is a, a two-combination support system of the supportive services onsite and the property management. And one of the great things about this project is our partner, Shangri-La Industries, is bringing significant investment for the acquisition and rehab of the motel, so that we're not asking the city for the, for the full weight of this, we're actually bringing in private capital for the acquisition and rehab of the project, and that will be a very significant investment in Fayetteville from outside that wouldn't happen otherwise. And our team of Shangri-La Industries and Step Up has done this many, many times, working for the past 15 years, and have actually delivered thousands of motel units across the country just like this. The project timeline we're talking about is probably within a two-year window, because we're bringing in private investment for acquisition and rehab of the property, and Shangri-La is a fully-integrated construction company, so they have engineering and design in-house. Once we get to go ahead on the approval side, we can turn the project around pretty quickly. The Asheville project construction will be about six months or so, and I think we started less than a year ago. So we're really committed to bringing in a project as quickly as possible and as inexpensively to the jurisdiction, to the city as possible. And of course, we'll do a complete refresh, and we'll convert the motel, and I don't know if you've been by it, but it's, it's not, it's not a pretty sight over there, broken windows, and everything is overgrown. We'll convert it from a motel, and we've done this in many communities, to what looks like more of an apartment building. We'll do landscaping and a complete refresh, of course, not only on the inside for the units, but also on the outside. So it looks like it's a, a really stellar community asset. We'll put in perimeter fencing and make sure, and cameras. Security is a big issue for us, and we want to make sure that not only are tenants protected, but addressing any community concerns, that we have lots of eyes and ears on the property. There's lots of amenities we'll offer onsite for the tenants, as you can see, from dog park, computer center, counseling center, washer dryer, et cetera. And again, I want to tell you that this is something we've done many, many times for the past 15 years, and it truly works. It's a model motel conversion that's been adopted by HUD at the federal level, and we've seen it done almost in every geography and every demography, and it's something we're really looking forward to, to bring into the city of Fayetteville. Just a couple pictures of some before and after, so we will really make it look beautiful, and we'll make it look less like a motel and more like an apartment building. And as you can see, some of these projects we've done many, many times. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Uh, we do have a couple of questions.
I'm just going to wrap up real quick, and then we can open up for questions. I just want to kind of put the ask with a bow around it.
Okay.
I do want to say that there, there are quite a few really amazing pictures of their before and after work in your, in your agenda packets to look through. We didn't want to stand up here and talk about each one of the projects individually.
Appreciate that.
So kind of the conclusion here, as Todd mentioned, this would be 137 units of supportive housing with mental health and case management services. It's, it's just over a half mile from our Day Resource Center that council will be getting a sneak preview of tomorrow morning. The city would support the project with 3.4 million in direct financing of the acquisition and rehab, and then 2 million in operating support for the first three years. So a total request here of 5.4 million dollars. It does require additional funding, about a million dollars for the three years. Partnerships are being looked at with the county for additional funding, and the Housing Authority for long-term voucher support to help with the rents. You can imagine the rents for our unhoused population doesn't command a lot of revenue. And so we're looking at exploring partnerships with the county and the Housing Authority. So that's kind of where we are with this project today, and Todd and I are happy to take any questions.
Do have a few. Councilmember Ingram, Thompson, and Dawkins, here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Colley, did I, I just want to make sure I understood you correctly, that you wanted to go ahead and dissolve this request before moving forward? Or you want to go us to get ahead, go ahead and approve before we move forward without rest?
The, the way I've got this structured is, we get to the end, and there's kind of a hit list of each one to give a thumbs up, thumbs down to.
Yes. That's no problem. I can definitely wait till the end. Actually, all the questions that I had for this had been answered. I drive by that property almost every day, as it's in my district, and so this is a full yes for me, and I'll wait till the end for a consensus. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Colley, I just have one question, because we've talked about removing the...
Mr. Colley, I just have one question, because we've talked about removing the homeless and putting them in a facility that's going to give them the structure they need to move forward. Has anybody asked the county for any money?
So the development team has approached the county, and we'll be talking with them. We wanted to get in front of city council as soon as possible, and then they'll be following up with county staff and ultimately county commissioners.
So my next question would be, as you asked for 3.4, you need 2 million for three more additional years, and 1 more million possibly beyond that. How's it going to be maintained beyond those four years?
So that's one of the reasons why we wanted Mr. Lipka to fly all the way in today, is to talk about their experience in creating a sustainable and long-living model. So I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Lipka to handle that.
Well, in most of the projects, as you know, there's not permanent funding for an unforeseeable time period. So what we typically do is to set in place funding for at least the first several years and use that time period to go out to the county, to the Housing Authority, to get the resources to support the project on an ongoing basis. Ideally, we'll have vouchers through a Housing Authority, which are annually renewed, and we have high confidence with that. Probably the biggest lift will be on the supportive services on an ongoing basis because the property will need ongoing supportive services. So we would look to get, as you know, at the state, there's a lot of things going on relative to Medicaid and Medicaid reimbursement. So we would go after Medicaid certification. We would look for philanthropy. We would look for any federal funds that would help support the supportive services cause. And then for any remainder, we would look to the county and perhaps the city to build this in future years.
I just have one last question, Mr. Mayor. Per the scenario that we went to Virginia, I believe, and we looked at one of their projects they had, they had a lot of services all confined to one location. Will you have, out of the 27 services that you just mentioned, housing is good, but transportation will be a stiff problem if they are not connected. So how are you going to be able to manage those 27 services, whether it be mental health or healthcare, or pharmacies, or whatever the case may be, centrally located so they don't have to use transportation?
Yeah. That's a very good question. So the role of staff is service coordination. So they're going to coordinate with all outside services. And of course, public transportation is something we want people to learn, and we'll handhold people to learn how to do that. We will probably also, because of this location, look to fundraise for a van that we can use onsite to transport people as needed to essential appointments that maybe they have difficulty getting to. We've done that for other projects.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Again, it's just what, a half a mile from the Day Center that has all those support? Okay. All right. Mayor Protim.
4 million from the city? Or where are we getting this 3.4 million from?
No, that's a great question.
Is this ARPA dollars or something?
So back here, when we looked at this kind of funding source slide, so the 3.4 million is coming from a special allocation of home funds from the federal government. That is specific to this type of project. The additional 2 million is from our American Rescue Plan.
Okay. So it's all federally funded, so we can get this thing started that way. Then, like Councilmember Thompson talked about, you want a million from us, or 333,000 a year after this first two or three years? Is that... So we just voted a little while ago to give 10,000 to a great program that we've been doing for 30 years, and now you bring in something to us as $333,000 every year that we're going to need to budget for? I want to make sure I understand that.
No, and...
It's either yes or no.
Well, I need to clarify. So the additional approximate million dollars is what they will be seeking from the county and other people. They're getting 5.4 from us. And we're giving them that. They still need to go approach the county about additional funding for supportive services and that support for that three-year period.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Councilmember here. Okay. We rolling? Good, good. Those were, we've had some very good questions, and that was some of my thought, too, about where the funding was. The ARPA, now, did not you make in the presentation earlier that there's 1.25 mil that was coming from ARPA? Or did I see that correctly?
So there is a 1.25 on here. Let me pull that budget sheet back up here. So the total amount of American Rescue Plan funding that council allocated towards housing efforts was $4 million. Right now, we've got 2 million of that going towards this project. We've got 1 and 1/4 going towards the next project after this one, which is a different type of project entirely. And then, we've got 3/4 of a million dollars set aside for a single-family development project.
Okay. Good, good. Whenever the construction is about, are we still going to, are we still asking for the same type of minority contractor support for building that will go out in your bid, in your memorandum of understanding, or your bid proposal? When it goes out, there's going to be a certain percentage that we're still trying to meet that obligation in this project also?
Yeah. So one of the things with the 3.4 million in particular is that it triggers a HUD rule called Section 3. And then, you have prescribed, they have to report to us every single week on how they're hiring Section 3 workers and Section 3 business concerns. And a Section 3 business is a minority business or a business located in a low-income area.
That's great. Now, my last question goes back to us and the budget, which I'll probably, that may be directed, could be to you or the manager. And within our GL bond, we decided that we were going to sort of phase structure, how we were going to use that. And what my question is, will there be opportunities in that restructuring of getting funding from the GL bond that we kind of stated we were going to sort of restructure and use as needed? Would this be, or projects like this be an opportunity to do that?
Thank you, Jennifer. We have, to come back to you on proposals for the 12 million dollars. But clearly, the projects that Chris has outlined and the funding sources, as he indicated, these funding sources are directly related to the projects that he's bringing you tonight. But you are correct, we do have 12 million dollars, and Chris and his team have some ideas and will soon be soliciting proposals from people who can bring projects to us. And we're looking forward to that as well. But tonight, what makes this so exciting is that in each one of the projects, in the remaining four that we're going to talk about, we're going to be accessing this federal money, using this federal money. And if it were not for these federal funds, I don't believe that we would have the ability to do any of these projects.
Right, right.
And it gets more exciting as we go along, particularly one on South Cool Springs, the Blanton Green Hillside Manor, and Fayetteville Gardens as well. But of all of them, the one I'm most excited by is Step Up. And I think in my conversations with the mayor, I call this, again, as you may have said, is transitional housing. So as Mayor Protim talked about, there's people who are homeless, and how do we find them shelter overnight? And how do we get them stabilized so that somewhere like Step Up can actually come in and provide this supportive services? This is something that's not in our community. In 137 units, it's something that's desperately needed.
Yes, sir. I like it. Thank you, Mayor. I'm very, very much in support of it. This is something that we're talking about as far as long-term, which is a lot better. We always have the temporary-term housing, but this is long-term. So thank you. Thank you, team. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if we could go back to the other slide, the slide that had the 3.4 million and the 2 million. So before I start asking my questions, I am in favor of this. The only issue that we're going to have, it has 140 rooms. We're probably going to need another 140 by the time it gets up. So I think it's going to be a great add to our city. The question that I have, and I might be sounding like a broken record, but I really want to make sure that I understand it and everybody else. So where it says, okay, the city would support the project with 3.4 million in direct financing of an acquisition and rehabilitation, and 2 million in operating support for the first three years. So that is 3 million for all three years? Is 2 million for all three years, or 2 million each year?
So that's 2 million for all three. When we projected out the cost to provide the supportive services, it's about 3 million for the three years.
Okay.
So we're covering two out of the three.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't 2 million, 2 million, 2 million for three years. Then, my next question is, y'all have made plans to go talk to the county, is my understanding?
The developer has, yes.
The developer has. What happens if the county says no? What are, when? And I'm really, I'm really supportive of this because I know the need. But the question is, are you going to come back and need more? I mean, that's something that we have to, are you asking the county for the exact same amount of money? Are you asking them? Because that is, I'm not saying we're not going to support it, but you know, we need to look down the road because if you're asking them for $9 million and you get two, we all need to go back to the drawing board because I think everybody here is in favor for it.
Well, I think, if I could, when I talked to them originally, Chris, you can probably clarify that, some of the funding model depended on multiple options. It wasn't, it was some housing vouchers that I think we were not taking advantage of in the community. It was some emergency housing vouchers that Housing Authority could get from the federal government that would pay some of these expenses. So can you hit on some of the multiple streams? Because you know, what the consensus concern has been is when the county, or if they don't participate, or if they choose not to do at all, is it back on the city? You know, and so that's what I think is happening.
So there's, this is the toughest question I'm going to get tonight, so thank you. The county is in a similar position as the city, is that we have this one-time financial windfall of American Rescue Plan dollars, right? They need to find eligible projects to spend it on as well. This is a great opportunity. Now, none of us can speak to what they decide, but that's a fact that we can hang our hat on. It does also require the Housing Authority to get on board. Every project that they've done across the country has had Housing Authority support to some level or another. So what we're looking for tonight is potentially a strong statement from city council that this is a project you want to see happen, that you're willing to commit significant financial resources to, so that the developer can take that and begin talking to those other parties. I unfortunately can't, you know, look and see what's going to happen, and I am hopeful that, I think that because of the specific situation we find ourselves in, we will be able to get this community support across the board. If that doesn't happen, I can say that I'm pretty good with rubbing two nickels together, and I don't know how, but we would come back with a proposal to figure out how we could get that done. That would mean the expense of some other projects that are in the pipeline, but you know, we would have to give some other things. And so, if for whatever reason this project got to a point where official council action was asked, and the project was going to fail without other support, I would bring you some options to try to figure that out.
I'm trying to be very eloquent in this. And the concern is, you know, the very concern is, you know, I feel that up here on this diocese, we have used our ARPA dollars to its fullest advantage. I mean, we have spent everything that we could to help our residents. And this is a perfect example of what needs to happen, but you have the county that sent back 12 million dollars of their ARPA money. So the question that I'm having here is, where do we stand? Because this is a great project. It is a great project. But if we go through it and say, yes, let's do it, and we have all these other people that are coming to us that have great projects, are we going to be the ones at the end saying no to somebody? And that's my concern. And I'm not saying, you know, we don't do it. I'm just saying, we got to kind of mark our money out to find out where we are. So I'm going to leave it at that.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Banks, McGlaughlin, and then Hondros.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to just make a statement. Mr. Colley and our Economic and Community Development Department, thank you for your hard work, as well as the developers. These projects, as we know, they're much needed in our city. We have the funds to do it through ARPA. So I hope that my colleagues will go ahead and make the investment. Thank you. And thank you, too, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hondros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add that I think there's enough support on it, but the, in dealing with the homeless population as well as others, I mean, we've identified housing is a need for the city, all types of housing, market rate, affordable and transitional. One of the biggest gaps for our homeless population is the transitional housing. So we have the emergent, and then at some point, if they get in the system, they can get into some more permanent housing. So the transitional housing is a key piece that's currently a gap. So the more of it we can get, and the quicker we can get it, the better it would be for our community. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Ingram, I see your button.
Are we ready for a consensus motion?
I think we are.
Okay. Thank you. And then, once again, thank you so much. I'd like to gather a consensus motion to move forward for Step Up on Eastern with 3.4 million in home ARPA funding and an additional 2 million in ARPA funds for the project.
All right. Consensus by Councilmember Ingram. Okay, and I see second of support by Councilmember here. All right, council, I'll look to you for action. All right, discussion. Councilmember Benedetti.
Mayor Colvin mentioned it earlier. He brought this Step Up program from a mayor's conference. Just wanted to also add that the Homelessness and Mental Health Committee that this city council put together also reviewed this item back in February. So certainly, the support is there from my committee members, Mr. Hondros and Ms. McNair. So I'm definitely looking forward to this going forward. I just wanted to add, when it comes to the county, there's always this constant concern with the county and whether or not they're going to do their part because they're mandated by law to deal with social services and health services. But by that same logic, the only thing the city is mandated to do per statute is building code enforcement. So to put that in perspective, if tomorrow the police department disappeared, the sheriff's office would simply respond to 911 calls. But we know that this city demands a higher level of service, and so, we have FPD. Similarly, even though the baseline is supposed to be the county's responsibility, if our community is demanding that we work and serve unhoused, the community, unhoused community in the city with a project like this, we can certainly go to the county for the monies that we want from them, but we shouldn't use it as an excuse not to do the right thing. So let's always keep that in mind. It's not an excuse that they do social services, health services. We always supplement and add to and do what the people in Fayetteville truly want. So if that's sustaining this for the next two, three years, whether or not the county does what they're supposed to do, this is what we must do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, council, I'll look to you for action on this item. All right. Adam Clerk. It's unanimous. Chris, good job. Good to see you, sir. And look forward to great things.
But that was the big and the toughy. So got a couple more projects to go through here. So next up is Fayetteville Gardens. This is 100-unit family apartments built in 1980. It's currently in need of rehabilitation. Funds that the developer is requesting would replace electrical systems, install energy-efficient appliances, address some structural issues with the property, and improve ADA accessibility. You can see a picture of it here, just a little bit we took off of Google Street View. So this project right here, current application for 4% low-income housing tax credits is at the state waiting for award. So those tax credits are non-competitive, so assuming that they filled out the application correctly, they would be awarded tax credits. They're requesting American Rescue Plan funding in an amount of 1.25 million dollars. Financing is in the form of a low-interest, long-term loan. Affordability is secured on the units with Section 8 program directly with HUD, so this isn't a Housing Authority property, but it is HUD-affiliated. And tenants pay no more than 30% of their income, which is our definition for, for, for income for affordability. And then the contract with HUD pays the difference. So in your agenda item, which I'm now regretting not putting on the proposal, was the location of this property. So this is right over by Chick-fil-A off Rayford Road. If you, if you drive down that street there and you kind of hang a right, you'll see it there.
So a question to this end, Chris, is, uh, who, who's the, well, not necessarily who, but so was this one of those projects that were built with tax credits and the city contributed back in 1980? And so we also paid for the rehab and outfit to it?
So, so the, the tax credit program actually came about in 86 when I was born. And so this happened in 80 before that. So the developer who's asking us for funding now is, is called Orbach Developing. They're a nationally recognized affordable housing developer, and, and what they specialize in is buying distressed properties and bringing them up to a higher standard.
Okay.
And I've actually got those folks here from New Jersey with us tonight if you have any questions about the details of it. But they have a structure, like a layered financing plan that includes putting this under the Housing Tax Credit Program. In the past, it has just-
Which means they'll have to leave it there for a certain amount of years, right?
Yeah, they've got a 20-year contract on the, on the agreement with HUD right now at least, so it would be affordable for 20 additional years and really change the face of this development and, and the lives of those 100 families living there.
Okay. All right, Council, any other questions for Mr. Colley? Councilmember Ingram and here, I think, and McNair.
Thank you. This is, this is not a United Management managed property. That's what I thought, because I don't get the concerns that I get for United Management. That's how I can tell. What does the process look like for these residents in rehabilitation of the property? Will they be able to stay in-home? Or I do know, okay.
My name is Jay Reinhardt.
Hi.
I'm president of Orbach Affordable Housing.
You come closer to the mic.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me better?
Sure.
And this is my analyst, David Baruch. We've been working on this project for a year now. So the, the relocation process and the rehab process, we use, just to give an example, we use, we use an affordable housing general contractor who's been in the business for over 20 years. That's who we partner with. And what we do is, for the ADA units, they have to vacate their property and we have to rehabilitate to the studs. So we would put them up in a, in a hotel. That's part of our budget.
Okay. And then for the regular residents?
For the rest of the tenants, it's, it's an in-place rehab.
Okay, that's, thank you.
So, okay.
They get to stay?
They get to stay, so we would tack, just to give you an example, like one day would be the kitchen and we would have a hospitality suite ready for them, or if they go to work. So when they would leave to go to work, by the time they come back, they would have a new kitchen, and then one day we'd tack the bathroom. So it's usually about a week per unit. But they get to sleep and, and we have a process where there's minimal disturbance to the tenant.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to ask, cause as Councilmember Thompson mentioned earlier, when we went to Virginia, they had a pretty much extremely good hospitality process for getting their residents' housing rehabilitation, relocation. So thank you for that. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember McNair.
I just wanted to say to Chris, as I was reading over this item, I got very excited. And I feel your excitement, and I, I'm so excited. I'm a little emotional over here because there are a lot of housing that's needed in my district. Hopefully, this can spill over into District 7, and I really appreciate your effort and all the developers and the persons that are gonna be responsible for housing these people. Very, very, very excited.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, I have a question for you. The U of the city manager, what is the standard interest rate that we're giving these loans out? Come the last three that I'm looking at, they're all 2% for 20, 20, and 30 years.
Yes, sir. So, so that's, that's on me. So when we underwrite these projects, we look at the rents that they bring in versus their operating expenses and what can they afford to pay back. 2% is pretty much where we're at in the industry right now. I do have some loans at, at zero. It's, affordable housing don't make money. And so a lot of times what I'm looking at there is a debt coverage ratio of 1.5, and I'm trying to hold them to that debt coverage ratio, which is the same one that the Housing Finance Agency is gonna require and a lot of HUD programs.
I'm gonna follow up with a statement and not a question, because what I have a problem with is when I get a phone call, no, I'm not even gonna say it. Never mind. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Councilmember here.
No, sir. My question has been answered, sir.
All right. Mayor Protem, you had something?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Chris, so, or I guess city manager, is there 1.25 million still in our American Rescue Plan Act funding bucket? There is. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion.
All right. Mayor Protem, Doc.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it please the council, make a consensus motion to move forward with the Hillside Manor?
This is Fayetteville Gardens, sorry.
Fayetteville Gardens. Thank you. Fayetteville Gardens.
All right. And by support, I see it was seconded by Councilmember Ingram. Council, I'll look to you, look to you for your action on this item. Okay, good job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Colley, you still around?
Yes, sir. Trugging right along. We got another one coming up here. This is, this is Hillside Manor. So here's a picture of what Hillside Manor looks like. This is off of Rosehill Road. This is a property that, it is very complicated. This was a Housing Authority-owned property that through a federal program that does not allow the Housing Authority to create new properties anymore. They, they convert these properties into privately-held properties. So this is privately-held, but it is still associated with the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority is the property manager for it. The, the ownership entity is Hillside Manor FMHA. So for, for all intents and purposes, the Housing Authority is the owner of this property. It's just, it's very convoluted legally, but it makes sense when you live in the HUD world. So this is a smaller development with 32 units of income-restricted senior housing. This one was also a bit before my time, built in 1971. Substantial repairs and rehab are needed to bring it up to current standards. They're requesting 1.8 million in the form of a low-interest loan. We haven't fully underwritten this project yet. We have some consultants that are doing that financial modeling for us. And so once we came back with a final council action in a future meeting, we would have that interest rate established. But this is 1.8 million of our home funds, and we'll figure out, most likely it's gonna be, you know, when we run the numbers, it's gonna, it's gonna be a 2% loan with a 20-year balloon payment at the end. As I said here, further staff evaluation is needed of the capital needs assessment that they just submitted and the financial model. So we, we spend a lot of time really sharpening our pencils and making sure that the numbers make sense, that the income that they bring in, they've got enough to take care of the property for the future, and then they pay us back what, what they can afford. And I, I try and get every penny. So this one, unfortunately, Ms. Weeks is, is not here tonight from the Housing Authority Executive Director. She had a family emergency, but we do have a representative if I need any backup, but I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, Council, any, any questions on this? All right, not seeing any. All right, look to you for action. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Little-known fact, I used to get babysat in those apartments. All right, I'd like to gather consensus motion to move forward with Hillside Manor, for 1.8 million rehabilitation funding.
All right. Councilmember Hondros is in agreement on a second. All right, Council, look to you for action. All right. Nine oh, are those voting? All right. Motion carries. All right, Mr. Colley, you're wearing your welcome mat.
Hey, we're, we're getting there. We're dragging right along. All right, so, so this project is over on South Cool Spring Street. There's a, kind of a oddly-shaped building that has eight one-bedroom and efficiency apartments in it. It's been vacant for a very, very long time, well over 10 years. It was at one point declared by the police department as a nuisance property. So a private developer, Innovative Builds, has came in and bought the property and is proposing to rehabilitate it and turn it into income-restricted affordable rentals. This is part of a larger plan that they have over the long term to, to acquire more property in that area. The city also has property near this one that, that may go into longer-term redevelopment efforts on Cool Spring. This, this is probably just my favorite thing, is this visual right here of what, what these folks are planning to do to it, add a parking lot, pave it, and, and just really make this into not a nuisance facility. Another benefit to this project, as I get into the details, is that every one of these projects we put in front of you requires staff commitment to annually inspect it for physical property and for income and, and compliance. So, you know, I know we had programs in the past that looked at different rental properties. This allows us to get into those properties and make sure that we understand who they're renting to and that they're keeping that property in a good working condition. So the, the deal right now is that it would have eight units, four one-bed and four studios. Substantial repairs and rehab are needed to bring it up to current-day standards. The request is up to $400,000. We'll, we'll dial in on the exact right amount and number at 2%. Now, the interesting thing with this one is that this is fully amortized, so this would be fully repaid over the 30-year term. It doesn't have that balloon option on it. And they are ready to close immediately upon council approval. So if we get consensus tonight, we'll be bringing it back very shortly, and then you'll see work starting on that property.
All right. So, Mr. Colley, I did have, have a question about this, particularly while you have some of your, your developers that are here. It's something I want to, I will bring to council, trying to, to work with legal and AG's office and some other mayors and some other communities about maybe getting an understanding written from developers and people who receive city dollars for programs like this. We need them. But over time, that there will be a pledge that will, that will help us with mitigating some of the bad things that we deal with in the community. Not saying they all happen here, but what I'm saying is there's a pledge and an understanding on the front end that if you get city dollars and participate in a program, that you will help us to eliminate, you know, particularly the gun violence piece is what I'm talking about. So with some of your residents and tenants that are having any issues with, with legal guns, or if you have a certain number of calls on the nuisance side, how do you address that when you are going through these pro, pro, uh, programs with these developers? Cause it's one thing to get the money in to build the facility, it's another thing is to making sure that it stays in a, in a positive way. And I'm not saying that about anybody I've heard tonight, right? Cause a lot of them, you know, you have to ask where it is. That means that, that they've done a good job with, 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 with that. But did you talk about that at all?
Yeah, it's, it's interesting. That, that's one of the reasons why HUD did the public, the prohibition on public housing modernization is, is because we used to have this model where HUD gave you a bunch of money, you build a property, the property ran down over time, you bulldozed it, built something new. And so in this new model, they require us to have financial sustainability, and a big part of that is this guy can't make his debt payments if he doesn't rent out these eight units. And the folks who live here aren't gonna wanna live here if it's a dangerous place. And so he is, he, his bottom line as a businessperson rides on the fact that he has a sustainable, decent place for people to live. There are some things that the city manager has asked us to look into that we, we're doing some research on, on what things can we put into the funding agreements to, to kind of aim towards that. Some of that I, I've got to check with our HUD consultants on like what's allowed, but that's actually a direction that, that city manager Hugh had asked us to look into a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Thompson and Ingram, was these new requests to speak?
Statement, Mr. Mayor, and I almost forgot about it. I had it down in my notes and-
Oh, and Benevente.
As I'm thinking about it, Chris, your process slide might have been a great idea for, I believe, Mr. Planter, who's gonna come back with our boarded-up buildings presentation. Because unbeknownst to me, I did not know that the process took so long. I did not know that this process started in June of 2021, and here it is, we're two years and two months past that, and we're just getting to the approval process. So as I recommended, the boarded-up process to take one year, which is currently five years, as we go down and make that motion later on this evening, that's something to take into consideration, Council, on just how long the process takes. Thank you.
All right, that's good. Good observation. Councilmember Ingram and then Benevente.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm prepared to make a consensus motion.
All right, I think Councilmember Benevente had a question.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Colley, I've got two questions. Do we have any idea about the rent for the units in all this Cool Springs development?
Yes, so part of the underwriting model is we prescribe the rents that they are, they are able to charge. I don't have those numbers in front of me right now, but they're, they're HUD-prescribed, and they adjust annually. So you've got, one, you've got the income certification, and then two, you've got the maximum rent allowed.
And maybe similar to the step-up program, are there gonna be any wraparound services included?
No, this is, this is straight housing, so some of the harder-to-house individuals that step up would tackle would not be, this would not be the ideal property for them.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to gather consensus motions to, uh, to motion to move forward with up to 400,000 in rehabilitation funding for South Cool Spring Street project.
All right. Seconded by Councilmember Hondros. All right, Council, look to you for action on this. Let's see, who hasn't voted? All right, y'all? All right. Motion carries. Unanimous. Thank you.
All right, last one on this item. So back in 2009, United Developers asked the city to fund a $380,000 loan for Blanton Green 2. The term of that loan at the time was 20 years at 2% interest. That term has, has come due, and unfortunately, at the time, they did not match their primary mortgage up with their secondary mortgage, and so one is due while the other is not. And so what that means is, they're not gonna be allowed to refinance and pay us off unless they refinance and pay off the entire thing. So I asked the company, what does that really mean? Cause, you know, what, what does councils gain out of approving this? And they came back and explained that right now, they're charging rents that are less than what the Housing Finance Agency requires, so they have some room to be able to go up in rent. And if they go out in the current interest rate market, they, they will have to increase some portion of the rents in order to cover that new debt issuance. So these are our home grant funds. This means that we would not receive $380,000 right now to invest in another project, but it does continue to have those rents at a lower rate where those folks are currently living there, and their rents don't increase based on the refinancing needs.
Thank you, Chris. I don't know if I mentioned it before, but I do have asked to schedule a meeting with Ms. Powell of United to talk about a number of things, which, you know, Mr. Doug has recommended that I had that conversation with her, and I think that is coming up this week. So, Council, some of the, the things that may need to be asked, to talk about here, maybe covered in that, in that meeting later in the week, if you all could consider delaying it until that happens. I could bring you up to speed on that. Councilmember Ingram and here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I am actually prepared to gather a consensus, but I do agree, and I am prepared to offer a consensus to, to honor that request, that a meeting definitely does need to be had concerning United Management properties in general, including this one. So whenever the council is ready, I'm prepared to move forward.
All right. So that's consensus, like it's second, but Councilmember here, you had a question?
No, Mayor, I was just, I was prepared to make that.
Go ahead, I'll second. Go ahead, I'll second.
I was prepared to make that motion. I, I was honored to be a part-
I was prepared to make that motion, I was honored to be a part of that groundbreaking and ribbon cutting for this item. But I do just have one question, and I do support for us, because I was aware of the meeting the mayor's speaking of. The $380,000 at the time that it was initiated, is that the balance where we are still?
Yes, sir, so for 20 years, they've made interest only payments.
Oh, okay, because I kept saying to myself, well, that can't be what the loan is to pay out, so it's still at the, okay. All right, Mayor, I'll make a motion that we table this item, we hold this item back until after we have our meeting on, after the meeting with United Realtors.
All right.
Second.
All right, and our council looking for action on this. We missing, okay, all right. At motion carries, so we'll keep you posted on the outcome of that.
So, very quick wrap up, there's other projects on that list that we're working on with consulting with developers right now. Some of those are single family home developments, some of it is multifamily developments. In general, we're trying to improve housing quality and challenge neighborhoods and support mission driven nonprofits with these funds. I just want you to know that your teams are hard at work trying to bring more projects like this back to you. We sought consensus on each one as we went, so the work of council was done on this one, I appreciate you all.
All right, good job. And Chris, I do have a question for education purposes, me and the manager were kind of going back and forth about this today. So, on the housing bond, which are local dollars, do we have a little bit more flexibility on the AMI requirements? If we chose to do it, what's the statutory guidance on that?
So, on rental development, it's a little trickier, but what city council did do was move that forward on on single family homeownership, and so, we're now one of five cities in North Carolina that we're about to launch. I just had my new hire start today, a down payment assistance program to help in the middle income. And so, we're really kind of blazing new ground in that area. Unfortunately, the state does put some restrictions on the rental side of things.
Okay, all right, thank you. Oh, you had a question?
I thought we were gonna hear more about it. For the down payment assistance, I did request when we were in budget session, if we could potentially look at the income requirements. When you look at the tiers, you are at the bottom of the barrel to be able to get down payment assistance. I mean, you're making $20,000, $30,000, and people who are still struggling even at 40, 50, when you say that middle, were you speaking to those individuals as well?
Yes, ma'am, so our current down payment assistance program is using federal money, and we're prescribed at 80% of area median income and below. What we're going to do with our local dollars that we have from our state delegation, that million dollars, is launch a down payment program for up to 120% of area median income. So, that's going to hit more of our workforce and lower middle class folks.
Okay, and I just want to make sure I'm processing, because I, me personally, the people who want to apply for it, they don't meet the requirements because they're making too much on paper. And so, essentially, you're saying this will help that.
This will increase that by a percentage, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, council, before we go to 4.04, let's take a 10 minute break. Then, coming back, we have Murchison Road, Merchant and Choice Neighborhood, Cynthia Leaks and crew back there, and then we have Parks and Rec and proposed amendments to boarded up structures.
and we looked at the different federal regulations around the money and how we could use it, and we brought back some ideas on projects to accomplish those goals. On September 12th of 2022, council authorized a list of projects for that first 20 mil. And then, in February of this year, council was updated on ARPA projects to include the entire $40 million allocation. So, once y'all gave me the money, we started getting to work, and our team started meeting with folks. At the same time, we had the Merchant and Choice planning effort going on, and so, we really wanted to base a lot of our efforts towards a partnership on the goals of that Merchant and Choice Transformation Plan. So, we put out a notice of funding availability back in May, it was open for one month. We were looking to partner with somebody who could help us with three of the main goals identified in that plan, which is free your low cost mental health services, youth and teen enrichment, and tutoring programs. The city said that we would finance the acquisition and rehab of a property, but we cannot commit to operational funding. That's a year over year occurrence, and we've got this one time money to invest intelligently, which means we need some kind of out of the box partnerships like what we're going to propose tonight. We also wanted people to make a visible impact on the merchant corridor, to put forward the ideas that we had in the Choice Transformation Plan. A nonprofit partner who would be eligible to apply would need to guarantee 20 years of continuous operation on the site. They need to support two of the three goals that we have from the plan. And they need to partner with other people in the community, we don't need anybody reinventing the wheel here. We need to make this a focal point and a community hub. So, we got two proposals in, one from a nonprofit called Way Too Real, and another nonprofit called United Ministries and Christ Church. You can see here on the chart how they kind of stack up against each other, I won't bore you by reading through it. Both of them addressed all three priorities from that plan. They both have a board of directors with several community members on it. They've both made partnership commitments, and they've got letters of support for those partnerships. Operational funding is going to be on them, and so, they've got current and future grant applications and community partnerships and in kind services, donations, fundraising, doing what nonprofits do. Both of them have about $40,000 in cash that they're bringing to the table to help with this effort. And just so happens, both of them identified the same property on Merchant and Road as a target for revitalization at 2400 Merchant and. So, I do have both of the nonprofits here tonight, they're happy to come up and answer questions, but again, I've taken up a lot of council's time already, so we're going to push through this, and you guys tell me what you want to do at the end. So, for Way Too Real, the head of that nonprofit, the state uses the term registered agent, that's the legal definition, is Dr. Tony Hare. He will establish a board just for community and grant seeking. So, he has a board for the nonprofit, but he's going to have another committee that just looks after, going after funding for this center in particular. He's got several programs listed here with different partners throughout the community that he's been working with. They all have letters of support that they submitted with their application. You can see that it's quite a list of services hitting on all of those things, from job and career readiness.
All right, council will call a meeting back to order. Moving to 4.04, Murchison Choice Neighborhood Community Center Opportunity. Mr. Colley, you back again?
Yes, sir. We'll be down here in just a minute. This one is a lot shorter. All right, so I just kind of want to kick this off reminding council how we y'all got a little bit of a decision to make on this one now. Yeah. I did want to remind you how we got to where we are here. So President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan back in March of 21. We got $20 million immediately. We got another 20 a little bit later on. But back in August of 21, the mayor established three council committees to help prioritize the needs in the community and what projects we might do. Those projects, we had one for infrastructure, one for business and economic development, and one for community livability, right? And so the committee that worked on community livability came up with a couple priorities. They had $5 million bucks. They put $4 million into affordable housing, and they put a million into a potential partnership for a community center. So that committee came up with several like important aspects, expanded community capacity, creating resilient residents, and creating thriving communities. So a little bit later on, April 4th, we took those ideas and we went back to our consultants and we looked at the different federal regulations around the money and how we could use it. And we brought back some ideas on projects to accomplish those goals. On September 12th of 2022, council authorized a list of projects for that first 20 mil. And then in February of this year, council was updated on ARPA projects to include the entire $40 million allocation. So, once y'all gave me the money, we started getting to work and our team started meeting with folks. At the same time, we had the Murchison Choice planning effort going on. And so we really wanted to base a lot of our efforts towards a partnership on the goals of that Murchison Choice Transformation Plan. So we put out a notice of funding availability back in May. It was open for one month. We were looking to partner with somebody who could help us with three of the main goals identified in that plan, which is free or low-cost mental health services, youth and teen enrichment, and tutoring programs. The city said that we would finance the acquisition and rehab of a property, but we cannot commit to operational funding. That's a year-over-year occurrence, and we've got this one-time money to invest intelligently, which means we need some kind of out-of-the-box partnerships like what we're going to propose tonight. We also wanted people to make a visible impact on the Murchison Corridor, to put forward the ideas that we had in the Choice Transformation Plan. A nonprofit partner who would be eligible to apply would need to guarantee 20 years of continuous operation on the site. They need to support two of the three goals that we have from the plan. And they need to partner with other people in the community. We don't need anybody reinventing the wheel here. We need to make this a focal point and a community hub. So we got two proposals in, one from a nonprofit called Way Too Real, and another nonprofit called United Ministries in Christ Church. You can see here on the chart how they kind of stack up against each other. I won't bore you by reading through it. Both of them addressed all three priorities from that plan. They both have a board of directors with several community members on it. They've both made partnership commitments, and they've got letters of support for those partnerships. Operational funding is going to be on them. And so they've got current and future grant applications, and community partnerships, and in-kind services, donations, fundraising, doing what nonprofits do. Both of them have about $40,000 in cash that they're bringing to the table to help with this effort. And just so happens, both of them identified the same property on Murchison Road as a target for revitalization at 2,400 Murchison. So I do have both of the nonprofits here tonight. They're happy to come up and answer questions. But again, I've taken up a lot of council's time already, so we're going to push through this, and you guys tell me what you want to do at the end. So for Way Too Real, the head of that nonprofit, the state uses the term registered agent, that's the legal definition, is Dr. Tony Hare. He will establish a board just for community and grant-seeking. So he has a board for the nonprofit, but he's going to have another committee that just looks after going after funding for this center in particular. He's got several programs listed here with different partners throughout the community that he's been working with. They all have letters of support that they submitted with their application. You can see that it's quite a list of services hitting on all of those things, from job and career readiness to mental health counseling services, tutoring, music, art, and entertainment programs. And, you know, working with job opportunities with the military, with law enforcement, with fire rescue, just a wide variety of options there. The next nonprofit that applied was United Ministries in Christ Church. They've been around in the community for quite a while as well. Dr. Derek Montgomery is the head of that organization. They've got several partnerships listed here and a similar operating budget. You can see here, they've got some mental health, prescription co-pay, youth development, and job readiness programs as well. So just kind of a recap of what we've done thus far, from May to June, we had that notice of funding out there for the community to respond to. I'm really proud of our outreach efforts. We've got about 200-plus different nonprofit and community leader contacts on a constant contact email listserv. So when we put out stuff like this, we send it out to them. And right now, we've got over 60% engagement. That means when we send out the email, people don't just delete it, they click on it, open it up, and read it. In June, mid-June, our staff reviewed those proposals to make sure that they were complete and met all the legal and grant requirements that we needed to do. And then here we are tonight, presenting that to city council. Moving forward, if you guys give us a consensus to move forward, we'll develop some legal agreements and documents to make sure we protect the city's interest. And then hopefully by September, we'll be able to close on the property itself. The options for council is to decide to fund one of the organizations, send us to a future council work session for more discussion, or take no action and tell us to figure out a different way to invest this money.
Well, Chris, you know, I'll say, I don't remember it ever coming down to an either-or like this. These are two great proposals, two great groups doing something that we asked to do. There was no, it just so happened to identify the same building, I guess because your RFP or Q said it had to be in this area? Was that it?
Yeah, we piggybacked on the whole Murchison Choice planning effort to invest these dollars.
Right. And so, you know, you hate to be picking an either-or, so, you know, talking to Councilmember Jensen, I don't remember us ever having to do this before.
So I do have a recommendation for you, and I can tell you that our staff spent a lot of time talking to folks on this effort. We think that Dr. Tony Hare has been in the community for his entire life. He's been a successful business owner. He's got quite a bit more letters of support from different agencies. I think that there's an opportunity for some partnership with United Ministries in Christ. They bring a lot of different options to the table. And on top of that, there's a, so Dr. Tony Hare has a church, and he has a nonprofit, and he's got a business, and they're separate entities. United Ministries in Christ operates as a community-based church. They do a lot of great work. And we do have some concerns about the operation of a church in this facility and how that would interfere with the grants. We'd have to be very careful in constructing those legal agreements to make sure that they did follow. And for all of those reasons, we think that the Way Too Real proposal is much stronger. And that there's an option for United Ministries in Christ to partner in the facility to provide a lot of the community programming that they already offer.
I guess before it comes down to us working through that, have you had that conversation with them?
We have not talked with United Ministries in Christ about partnering with Way Too Real. We have talked to them about the challenges with the way that they'd like to use the building.
All right, well, I'll say this, and then I'll go to my colleagues, because there's several questions here. I mean, we've got a lot of work in this community to do. Got great agencies that are stepping up saying that they will do it. Both of these are very impressive. I would hope that, you know, if it's a resource thing, I would hope that the conversation takes place before it comes to us for possibilities of collaboration and what have you that should take place in your office, in my opinion. So I'm hoping this council goes through this. We find a way to find that balance to where they can talk through this with you and come back and say, hey, this is what we need. Because, I mean, we've got more work than we have people willing to do the work required for what they do. But these are two great proposals. But with that, I'll go to Councilmember Jensen, Benevente, and Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I will say that I agree with the mayor that, you know, this is a great problem to have, that we have two entities that want to help us. And in this day and age, finding people that want to get out and work is very rare. And thank you to everyone. Where I have the issue is, I just do not feel that it is council's job to pick one or the other. And I don't believe I've ever remembered having to do this. If I have had to do it, I think I would have remembered. If I didn't, I apologize. But I don't feel comfortable with that, because I feel like this should be something like everything else, that the RFP goes out, it comes to us and says, this is who won the bid. But if we go down this path, we are going down a very slippery slope. So personally, I do not know, you know, I know the individuals, but I do not know them. But at one point, if we are sitting here voting on whether this person gets it or that person gets it, you know, a majority of the council might have to say, I can't vote on this. So I just do not feel comfortable with it and would do not feel that it is a fair vote myself for us to be put in this position.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Benevente.
Mr. Hewitt, are you trying to chime in really quickly, or? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Benevente, and thank you, Mayor. Yes, staff's recommendation is the proposal that is fronted with Dr. Hare. And I apologize that that wasn't clearly communicated. One of the things that we do know is that there is a great deal of interest in community support and everything related to the Murchison Choice project, and this is one of them. There are even people who have been speaking to some council members who would have liked to have participated as well. There are other questions which came up. But based upon, as Chris talked about, the tenure of the organization, as well as the letters of support of the partners that they will bring, the recommendation is Dr. Hare's group. But if there are ways, as Chris said, and as I think the council supports, having an opportunity to partner with or look for other ways to utilize people who want to also help us and support the neighborhood, particularly along Murchison Corridor, we'll definitely look for that. But with the funding that we have available, staff's recommendation, again, is Dr. Hare.
Well, maybe I missed the amount. What's the amount for the acquisition rehab?
So the acquisition of the property is just under half a mil, and then the rehab is about $400,000 for, but their estimates vary slightly. But give or take, it's going to take the million dollars to rehab this facility into what it needs to be.
All right. Councilmember Benevente, I'm sorry.
You're fine, Mr. Mayor. Director Colley, the Way Too Real folks, do they already have existing facilities locally?
No.
Okay. And, you know, certainly, I think we're all saying the same thing, no matter who's awarded it, you know, the other party will certainly be in the rolodex now for the Economic Development Department, knowing what they do and working with them, you know, for other opportunities that they may be qualified for.
Yeah, and, you know, to add to that, UMIC currently was awarded a grant by city council in our last action plan to help with their efforts.
Thanks, sir.
All right, Councilmember Hare?
No, sir, that must be something old.
Ingram?
Thank you. So really quickly, before I get to my full set of questioning, City Manager or Mr. Colley, can you explain to me how we are having to choose these two individuals? And I'm going to ask this simply because in our budget cycle, you presented a plethora of nonprofit organizations that we would work with. A few months ago, when the Day Resource Center came to us, you told us it was going to be Cumberland Health Net to do the work. And all we needed to do was, I think, support a match of a position. So just before I get to my question, answer to me how we got to us having to choose this.
So I will reiterate the city manager's point that staff's recommendation is to go with Way Too Real. So first off is that annual action process, that planning process that I just mentioned, that Councilmember Benevente. So we put out for competitive grants on an annual basis with a limited amount of funding. And then we make a staff recommendation, and council accepts that recommendation to fund a variety of agencies, but also not fund some agencies that we work with in other ways. With Cumberland Health Net and the Day Resource Center in particular, they were the only respondent to that request. In this case, we do have two qualified respondents, one more attractive and qualified than the other in Way Too Real.
Okay, thank you. So here's what I look for with something like this, especially with, as we heard earlier, us going to Newport News, I'm looking at rate of success. What we are seeing that works. This doesn't necessarily give a good picture for me rate of successes based off of what's in our packet. Now, I'm going to throw something out there, and I don't necessarily expect this council to support it, but this is just how I am thinking. We have an entity that is already working with the city to do what is listed within this scope, which is called, which is the Proof Project. They are on Murchison Road right now. They provide teen support services, after-school situations, intervention measures with parents and teens, and resources for connected mental health situations. And I'm all about supporting people who need the help to support. And I can say comfortably about Proof Project because I'm actually seeing it. This is no disrespect to the ones that have applied and have, you know, put, said, I trust that you are qualified. But in terms of where we are and what I know that I can see, I do see that work. And we have already made a significant investment in the Proof Project. And I think it would be, it would be in our benefit to see that through. I do know that we, that they are outgrowing the space that they are in. But that's just my feedback on this. But I was really concerned, like Councilmember Jensen was, about how we became the ones to choose between two. I understand that there is a recommendation, but you're still putting two in front of us. And I'm not necessarily sure, City Manager, I don't know if there's, based off of what I'm gathering, I don't know if there's a consensus on how we are to move forward with this. I don't know if we put it back out. I'm not sure. And I would like some clarification on how we would handle this.
And I think we'll run around and try to get a pulse of council as to where they are, Councilmember, and then we'll circle back on it. Councilmember Dawkins, then Hodros and Jensen.
Mr. Mayor, I was ready to make a motion, but if you're warning the others.
Yes. Councilmember Hodros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Colley, could you put on Slide 5, please?
I don't have numbers, so.
You just passed it.
This one here?
Nope, one, the next, this one, I believe. Yeah, so on the programs and the partners, I'm just curious, are there any kind of agreements in place with the partners, or do we know that?
So part of our submission requirement was that they submit letters of support from the heads of these agencies. And so everybody you see here had the letter of support for both entities.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I would like to make, I would like to make a motion that we circle this back, that we bring it back, and let staff and everyone talk, and that maybe we can get both parties together and figure the best scenario for this. But again, I think that the council voting and picking is a very slippery slope that we're going to go down. I think that we need to table it and have staff come back.
So consensus motion, I think kind of where I believe Councilmember Jensen's going is that we want to find a way that we are supportive to both of these partners. Okay, because these are the kind of partners that we're looking for to help us with this work. And so, you know, it puts us in a bad situation to try to pick a winner or loser, because I think they're both needed. So, you know, of course, we don't have as much resources to fund everybody that we can, I mean, that we would like to, but we fund what we can. So the consensus is that maybe you get back with them and see if there's any opportunity for collaboration with this. You know, and if council doesn't object to that, you know, we would rather get it right than not. So this is something that I'm excited to see. It's a big, significant piece to this Murchison Choice process. But let's find a way, if you can, with staff to kind of see if there's any synergies available between these two partners. If that's council's will, and I do see Councilmember Ingram and Dawkins have pressed their button, so.
So if I could offer a friendly amendment, Councilmember Jensen, would you also be interested in including Proof Project in the conversation?
As a bid, yeah.
Oh, excuse me.
Hold on, Councilmember.
I'll let the city attorney explain that to me. If you want to push a button and ask her, you can.
All right, so she asked for a friendly amendment, you're checking the legalities of it, which I agree that this, that's not what the suggestion.
The legalities of it. I'm just asking, if we can do it, then I would like for that to happen, if we can do that, Madam Attorney.
Well, first of all, the only consensus motion, are you amenable to that, or you want to keep those two things separate?
Pressure agreement.
Oh, okay. So Councilmember Ingram, if I'm not mistaken, and tell me if I am, on the, on what you showed me that the other group was doing is basically the Proof Project. Is that correct?
And more.
Okay, but that's, but they're doing that, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that, I would like to keep it the way it is, because it's, what I'm trying to do is, as the mayor said more eloquently than I could, is that we have two partners out here, and there is no way that I want somebody to walk out of here thinking that we don't care about the work that they're doing.
And I'm not saying that.
I understand that, but I would like to keep it, because I know that they're doing what's in the Proof Project. I feel good about that.
And I get what you're saying. It's okay. I just, I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, all right. Council, so I don't see any other inquiries, have a consensus request to ask that both partners, potential partners, would go back, meet with Mr. Colley and his team, come back to us. Mr. Colley, what's the deadlines for this? Because I know we've got a grant application pending. Yes, Mr. Hewitt?
Again, I apologize for what appears to be confusion from the staff, but we do have a clear recommendation for council. Looking at the, at your agenda packet in the presentation, we had an RFP process, application period open from May 19th to June 18th. And the city sought a partner with a nonprofit organization to develop a community center on Murchison Road as part of the Murchison Choice planning process. To establish free or low-cost mental health services, develop a youth and teen enrichment center, and create tutoring programs leveraging local resources, among others. Nothing that Chris has said, or I think that questions that y'all have asked, would prevent whoever is selected, if anybody is selected by council, from reaching out to the other groups to also making space available to provide those services. But clearly, what we have is, we have an ownership where both parties that have applied are interested in support from the city using our funding, which is designated kind of for this purpose, to acquire the building, and then it would have a restriction where it would be in use for 20 years. And if it doesn't, it would revert back to the city. The building appears to be in good shape, but it does need renovations to be able to support the use. It would be, again, you guys do make these decisions all the time on bid specifications, where we tell y'all, we had 10 bidders, of the 10 bidders, staff evaluated proposals, and we're recommending X.
Right, but what was different with this one is you didn't come in with that premise.
Again, it was, I think that we, Chris got a little, got a little tongue-tied, but we have a clear staff recommendation. And we probably just provided a lot of information to you about both proposals, but the clear staff recommendation is Way Too Real. If you'd like for us to go back and to talk to both of them as well, we're more than happy to do that. But ultimately, again, how the process was laid out, we were seeking to partner with a non- But ultimately, um, again, how the process was laid out, we were seeking to partner with a nonprofit to own and operate and then bring in partners, could be proved, it could be the other group, it could be others of the 20-plus letters of support, um, that both parties have, but, um, again, staff recommendation, again, apologies, it was not as clearly stated, is that you recommend, you move forward with rate real, but of course, this is council's decision. If you're not ready to make the decision tonight, we'll go back.
All right. I see Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin. Benevente and Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to be clear, though, um, there were only two organizations that applied for the RFP.
So we put it out for 30 days. We had several incomplete applications that we reached out and gave them a week to finish. And these were the two that submitted complete applications.
Okay, so I just have a few things. So for those who are in the audience and those who are listening, keep an eye on when the city of Fayetteville put out these RFPs. So like, stay informed of what's going on so that when, uh, our, our RFP is out there for bid, you can apply for it. Um, so I, I will be supporting, um, the recommendation. Um, and I want my colleagues to understand that our staff, you know, we, Mr. Colley been doing a great job, um, with bringing organizations to the table as far as helping with affordable housing down to, um, homelessness. Um, so I do trust your recommendation. Um, I do want, well, I'm hoping that when it's come back, when you have those conversations with both organizations, whichever one, um, the council chooses or that staff recommends, I hope that they can work together because the more, the merrier. If we have two different organizations trying to do the same thing in a community, I hope that one or the other will work together to make, um, make our city better. Um, that's all that I have. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Thompson.
But, uh, Councilmember Gates McGlaughlin just, uh, asked a question I was gonna ask, but I'm gonna ask it a little bit more directly. Are the two agencies currently here way too real and united ministries in Christ?
Yes, sir, they both are.
If they are, can we ask them, no matter who gets the bid, are they willing to work together? And if so, we can make the vote tonight.
Yeah. Mayor Cole, I have a question before we proceed with that, um, for our city attorney. I have concerns about us imposing on any group what is their personal sort of, uh, agency over a bid that they, they put in. And if they are awarded it, they have the agency to do that without the pressure, political pressure that you place on them by making them make a decision now in order to win now. So, city attorney.
I'm, I'm sorry, let me jump in there.
Yeah.
So these folks are not autonomous. They, they work for a board. So their, their boards need to make that call.
Absolutely.
I think it's a great idea and that's where we want to go to, but they, they do report to a board.
And let me, let me just also add, this is not a political question. This is a community question about helping those in need. So if you're willing to help, help. If you want for the money, then do something else.
But point of inquiry, city attorney, it sounds like we can't ask that question because it would be improper to put that on them.
Well, listen, uh, so here's what we'll, we'll do, uh, if, if council would, uh, would be amenable to that. I think everybody's goal that I've heard from is collaboration and working together, okay? The initial proposal that we didn't get a consensus on was to ask that, just to table this decision to ask both parties to meet with you, for you to come back with something acceptable to us that's legal, not pressured.
Thank you.
Uh, but has the concerns addressed. We want both partners engaged in helping us make this a better community, okay? And so I think that is what everybody's goal is. So, council, are you all okay with allowing Mr. Colley to, uh, have that, uh, discussion with them? Or that was the consensus motion by Councilmember, uh, Jensen? Haven't had a vote on, uh? Okay. You don't, but that's an indication whether you're gonna get a consensus or not, but, all right. Yeah, okay, all right. Uh, well, let me see, Councilmember Thompson, you finished? Sure. All right. Councilmember Benevente.
Help us understand the RFP process because my biggest concern here is that we don't, I, I understand the, the heart and the intention of this council to want to make everyone happy. And I think there's a way to do that while still following the rules. You applied, somebody's got a recommendation from the city, and if they are awarded this opportunity, I just don't think that we shouldn't, uh, I'm, I'll just stop there and then I'll make my comment after that. But is there, are there any concerns with the way we're proceeding in, in, in sort of usurping the RFP process traditionally?
Mr. Hewitt, you had your light on?
Sorry to, to interrupt, City Attorney. Um, council, given the discussion and how we started, I'd respect your request to allow me to pull this item and bring it back to you at another time.
All right, look forward to it. All right, well, to both parties, thank you, and, uh, you'll keep up, keep up the good work and Mr. Hewitt and his team will be in touch with you, bring him back. All right, Council 4.05, Parks and Rec Project Card. Mr. Colley, that's not you? You've been up here for two hours.
Sorry to disappoint you, sir.
All right, Mr. Stone, how you doing?
Doing well. Hope you are. Good to see everyone again, Mayor, council members. It's that time again, bring back. Show you the progress we made on the Parks and Rec Bond projects. So you're familiar with this, with this slide, we've gone through it, quick introduction, background, completed projects. Um, the ones we're gonna talk about are Bill Crisp Senior Center East, MacArthur Road Sports Complex, Mazurik Tennis Center, uh, the Gilmore Therapeutic Center, Maple C Smith Park expansion, Cape Fear River Park, and the MLK Junior Park. Um, you've seen this, the same slide we've had before, while everything's been completed up to this point. Bring Bill Crisp Senior Center on. Uh, we're really actually completed with this project. Uh, we've been in this building since October. The city has been functioning. We had, we were in the process of finishing up some warranty work. Um, and we're finalizing the final payments to the contractor. We have, uh, I think there's, there's been a couple of, um, our council members that have been made aware of this problem. One of the, in the men's shower, one of the showers actually overflowing into the walk area. Uh, we're having conversations, uh, with the contractor. They tried to, a fix on that. It didn't quite work. We're still having the same issue, so they're talking with the floor, um, contractor right now, so, so we're hoping to have this, a solution for this in the next week or so with this one, so. But, uh, I'll, and if you haven't been by there lately, the, the site looks wonderful. Parks and Rec did a fantastic job finishing up the landscaping and the stormwater pond, uh, work and all that. So, uh, moving on to the Senior Center East, this project's doing really well out there. Um, it's moving on. We're looking at a substantial construction complete at the end of the year, maybe the first of the year, looking at maybe a ribbon cutting at the first of the year. Um, but right now it's moving on very well. No major issues with this one. Um, as you remember, the last task we had was the topping out ceremony where they put the last piece of steel in before they started covering the building. Uh, MacArthur Road Sports Complex up there on MacArthur Road and I-295. Uh, this one, we finished the design work. Um, the estimate for the, the, the full proposal as, as completed was around $19 million. Um, we have applied back in June, at the end of June, we applied for the Defense Community Investment Program Federal Grant. And so that would, uh, we're asking for that grant to fund this project. Um, there is a match involved with that, that we would have to be responsible for, for the city. But we were here back on that grant in October, so we're hoping that'll be positive, uh, for that, and that'll be a nice, uh, addition to the city in this area. Uh, Mazurik, excuse me, Mazurik Tennis Center. Uh, this is one that i- it's, we have to get a little more detail with this. The site work should be completed in October. That's the current date that we're looking, pushing forward. Um, the contractor that got the site work also got the separate tennis court contract. And he has actually started the work on the tennis courts as well. So the site work will be finished in October, completed, and then he'll be, um, the, the, right now, the schedule has the tennis courts finished in, um, say, when is that? Uh, let's think about it a minute. Uh, in, uh, January, I'm sorry, at the first of the year, so the tennis courts themselves will be finished. The building, if you remember, part of our value engineering piece of this one, before we had ARPA funds in this project, is we went back to the drawing board, talked with the, with, uh, Muter Construction, who was the group that got the building bid. And they thought they could save somewhere between $200, $250,000 by going to a pre-engineered metal building. So we're at the last piece of that, of doing that redesign on that metal building. So once we have that, uh, and we, um, have that finalized, we talked with the contractor. Um, once we have that signed with that, that's the, uh, the direction, finish that piece, we're going with the pre-engineered metal building. It'll be 270 days is what the contractor said about the approximate date. So that, that puts us a little ways out. But, uh, I was talking to Mr. Gibson, uh, we would definitely be using the tennis courts while we're finalizing the building out there. So we'd have the opportunity to play tennis even before the building's completed, so. But this one's a, a little interesting because we did have the, um, ARPA funds come in after we started doing some value engineering on this one. But we will have, uh, again, this will be a fantastic facility once it's completed, but. Uh, Dorothy Gilmore Recreation Center, um, the existing conditions, the, I mean, existing, uh, building that was, was, uh, remodeled, that has actually been completed now. And so they're focusing now on the new addition, the new 3,000 square foot addition. Uh, so this one right now, we're looking at that being complete in October. Um, so that'll be, uh, totally completed. There are a few warranty, a few, uh, punch list items in the new piece, but, uh, again, we'll be hopefully substantially completing on that one in October. Uh, Maple Si- Maple Smith, um, as you know, Parks and Rec, we're able to get the new playground and the, in the splash pad done recently. That, and that has been a, a, a big, um, addition to, a nice addition to this park. Uh, the, the work has begun on the, um, building itself. Uh, the site work has been worked on, the actual materials for the building have been moved on site. Uh, we're looking at this, uh, construction to be complete in April, um, of next year, so once that totally finished in April, so. And then the Cape Fear River Park, we're still, we have, if you remember, um, we had the developer come in, I mean, the contractor come in a while back and do a, they had a complete concept from, it was a little more than what we were looking at, but it was several years. Um, but their, um, total was about $9 million. Um, so right now, we are completed with the design, with the concept. And we're in a holding pattern to see exactly how we wanted to take the next steps forward, since there is 2.3 million there. I know one, one conversations, they actually had it phased where we can make a passive park, not quite with auto amenities, and space this out as budget becomes available. And then, of course, um, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Park, um, we actually had a very good meeting with, um, the members of the MLK Committee today, uh, moving forward with getting the MOA signed. Uh, they had some other comments, and so we met with them and uh, we'll be a little bit more back and forth with that. So we hope to have that signed here very shortly, uh, have that in hand. And from there, we, and we can, uh, move on with the actual, they, they're, on their side is actually getting the design. They've been in the process for a while now, getting that design completed. And so once they have the design, we can move forward actually having that constructed. So that's all I had on these projects and just opening up any questions.
Sure, Councilmember Dawkins Ingram and here. Oh, okay.
That's probably from last time.
Uh, it must be from last time, okay, I'll clear that. All right. Don't, uh, Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, thank you for this, and I would like to also say, um, more specifically about Maple C Smith Park, um, you are correct, this has been a great addition to that community. Since almost every week, I've been out there on random days during the day. And I think what was said in the past when we tried to get this done was there was no children there. And there are always children there now. And, um, that is a beautiful thing to see. Ms. Smith is enjoying children bring, being in that park. Um, I want to ask a few, few questions as it relates to parks, um, especially some of these parks that we are updating cameras. Have we gotten to the place where we have cameras at all of our city parks?
I will have to defer that question to.
Mr. Gibson.
Either Mr. Gibson.
Okay, and while he makes his way up, recently, we had discussions, um, a few budget sessions ago, um, about the Makerspace, and then recently, uh, adding some additional funding to the Glen, uh, Glenville, uh, Lake Access. I want to know, because I think, you know, when I asked this question last time, we would get reports about it, there was a difference between the Parks and Rec Report Card and then the Parks and Rec Bond Report Card. When are we gonna start to see updates related to those items? Um, I think some, well, at least one of those, the Makerspace is following in our capital improvement plan, yes? But is that gonna fall under Parks and Rec? And if, okay. And so when are, when are we gonna start to see, cause it's, I'm getting questions about it as well. And I did not see it, maybe come in later about Veterans Park Phase Two or Three? Two, Phase Two. Um, I know there's a council member request on that. Um, but when are we gonna, gonna start to see those updates as well? Because those are things that we have allocated, um, resources to. Um, but I'll let you go ahead and answer the first question, then you, you got the second question.
Uh, good, good afternoon, Council Mayor. Um, all parks don't have cameras. We're working in that direction.
Okay.
Um, some of the parks that we, we, we understand that need them are, are getting them. Um, we're having a conversation with the, uh, security, um, environment with the, with the city to make sure that we move in that direction as we start to redevelop some of our parks. The conversation, um, gets heated a little bit, but we're moving in the right direction to make sure that those parks that need them, um, uh, and sort of prioritizing them as best we can based on the funding.
And, and I'll say this, um, this kind of goes back to about two years ago, or, yeah, about two years ago, there was a park that happened in a neighborhood where, um, a young girl was, was shot and killed, which you, you would have never, you would not have guessed that would have happened in that park. And so I get the concern for priority or where it's needed.
Right.
But it's, it's happening, you know, everywhere in our parks. So thank you for that. And I, I, I hope that we can kind of make sure that we, we do some serious work towards that. When you say MLK MOA is coming very, very soon, how soon are we talking? And then I thought that they had already had a design. From what I've seen, I thought they had already had a design for this project. So can you elaborate on what, what you mean by more design?
Well, I, I, I think, um, today's meeting will solve the problem as far as them signing it and us moving forward. Um, the common ground that we got to the day, uh, has been, um, well-received. Um, so that'll happen pretty quickly now. Um, they've always had a master plan. I think what, what, uh, Rob was talking about is now going to that next step where we get the construction drawings and the permits. So then we can hand it over to our purchasing department so we can put that out on the street.
Okay.
But that, that'll be, that'll be shortly. I would say probably in the next three to four months, that'll be done.
Okay, and then are we gonna look to start including the other pieces into the report cards?
I would think that, uh, Rob would definitely be doing it. Rob, are you gonna do that?
Okay, thank you. Because we get asked about it, and thank you.
Well, and just the, the sense for, you know, giving information. Um, the landscape looks a little different now.
Yeah.
So how we prioritize things and in the CIP, we have to be more, a little bit more direct, so. But you'll see those things and, um, as the manager sees fit, we move in that direction.
Thank you.
Mr. Gibson, don't go nowhere. You're just getting to work. Before I go to Councilmember Thompson, we need a whole work session for your department.
I, I see. I, I feel the.
I, I want her, I'm gonna piggyback on these cameras for a minute. I know this is Parks and Rec Bond related, but, uh, we need, let the council needs to decide what's priority on the cameras. Because like she said, I mean, technology is too great. Uh, the stakes are too high for any of our property not to be covered with surveillance. I mean, businesses have to foot the bill, people's homes, you put them up, so these parks need to get it. It shouldn't be a matter of picking and choosing, uh, anticipated areas based on whatever you base that on. These parks need to get it, the walking trails need to get it. I mean, we, we need to do it. So if there's a, a way, uh, that we need to come back with a budget and let us make a decision about how that looks, I think that needs to happen, but. Uh, Councilmember Thompson, and then here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just had one question about the Cape Fear River Park. The budget approved 2.2 million, and I believe you said it's gonna cost 9 million. Did I hear that correctly?
When we went to the, uh, the, the particular consultant we talked to, they were, had a lot of experience in these type of river parks. Um, they, they went ahead and phased out a whole total type of plan to look at in the future with, there was some certain amenities that, uh, especially like Mr. Gibson asked for, some floating docks and some opportunities to get to the river. That was the final, uh, plan, but they did have some, some phasing in there to get, to match the budget and some other things. But that was to get the amenities that we were looking forward to be able to utilize the river in that location. That was the total budget.
So what are we gonna get for the 2.2 million that we already? So what are we going to get for the 2.2 million that we already approved?
They had a, they had a concept where you had a passive park and you had access, you didn't have the floating dock or things like that, that's in the, in the final, if you'll remember back when they actually came and did the presentation, there was some really nice amenities. That's the, that was the future part of that, most of that was just, for current, to get to that part, you'd have some amenities on top, not being able to maybe get to the, to the river at this time. That's a pretty good drop to get to there, that's pretty substantial.
So when is that going to come back to council?
When are they coming back to council?
Yes.
And we can ask them anytime to come back.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Hare?
Thank you, Mayor. Did you need to add something, Mr. Manager?
Into that, thank you. Now, one of the things that Rob and team may have mentioned is that for MacArthur, we are in, in running for a fairly significant grant opportunity. Should that opportunity not come back in the way that we think, or if there is a gap, past city councils, past city councils have left the river park as one of the last projects that we would work on, because it is such a large ask, and there was, there was a lot of priority for the active recreation facilities, such as the splash pads, such as the park improvements, such as the senior centers, such as a tennis center. And the Cape Fear River Park is, when it is built, it will be a real gem of our parks' assets. But we have been, again, looking at how councils previously have looked at this, whether right or wrong, it has been one of those parks that we have borrowed money from one place or the other. The staff is engaged, and we do have a design that we know we can build for the money that is available. But one of the considerations that we have as well is, we have an obligation to, in our agreement with Fort Bragg, to really try to go ahead and build something at MacArthur, and we're hopeful that that will come through. And we also, as Rob is saying, we're very optimistic on where we are on the budget for these projects, but one of the reasons that this project is last is because, again, it was kind of the passive park out of all of the ones that we were working on. And I, it's not for lack of importance or interest, but we are saving, or had been, again, looking for council direction, if y'all wish to change that, to make sure that we had sufficient money for all of the active and hardscape projects that we've been working on. We're very close, and I think we, the grant that we're looking to acquire, we should know something when, about, in about October. And so when it's time for, I think, the next update, we'll have a better handle on where we are with that grant, and we'll also have better information on what that looks like for us to move forward with the Cape Fear River Trail, Cape Fear River Park as well. But there was a strategy for why that project was kind of one of the last, the last, and we've made good inroads with it with, I think, a very exciting design, but we do not have the $9 million to build it out in one phase, but we do have still available money to make a sizable dent. But I did not want y'all to think that, you know, we, there's not a need for us to also have some flexibility as it comes to some of the other projects which are currently underway as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad to hear that we are moving a little bit further along with the MLK, because I've been riding them the last few weeks, and you too, Mr. Gibson, so I was glad to hear that, that we were meeting today and moving forward. And I understand that we, it was a good meeting today. As we look over to the Glenville Lake item, a few weeks ago, in, in Ju-, July, was it? June, July? We had, which?
July.
July? We had our public presentation over at Smith Seabrook Recreation Center, and I know, and I've been writing you about that one too, so I know what you have told me as far as the comments that were given and things along that line. Share that, because I know it, just kind of share that in the public, so the public knows, and those that might be watching through the, through the internet.
We had a, we had an update today with the steward engineer who's doing the work. They've, they got real good comments on the survey, online survey.
Right.
They're, we're trying to sort of shape that so we can bring it back and present to council, so everybody understands what's going on, and then it be a public document. They're doing very good work, and I think the, one of the things that I think might be getting lost in all of this as far as the Glenville Lake goes, that success is going to happen. The other one that I want to make sure that we're aware of too is how the wayfinding is tied into the, into the, our park system period, and how people get to, even with the African-American History Trail, that'll be a part of it, and we're trying to make sure that we bring it back comprehensive, so it's not fragmented. But as far as the Glenville Lake is, with the comments in the meeting over at Seabrook Recreation Center, Smith Recreation Center, that went very well. The public received it.
Yes.
They gave us some very good comments.
It was a good turnout.
How the access is going to go, will add tremendous value in how people get around Glenville Lake and then move over to, to coming into the downtown area through MLK. So look, look for that in about 30 days.
I'm glad you said 30 days, because I was going to ask you, what, what was your timeframe, so thank you.
Yes, sir, it's, it's shaping up real well.
Yeah, so let me just give a short little thumbs up here on the MLK. That's been, I mean, I know it sits in District Two, but that's been a part of my heart for years, so I'm glad to see where we are. I did not want to let Dr. Lacy's heart on this item just kind of spanned out, and sometimes that can happen when someone passes on. So I'm glad to see that we are moving forward, and thanks to council for all that we're working together, but I stay in, in your thoughts about those two, and I'm just, I'm honored for these two, but let's keep moving it forward, and I can't wait to hear in 30 days the Glenville Lake Mazaret Park plan and suggestions. Thank you, sir, thank you, council, thank you, Mayor.
All right, all right, council. Mr. Stone, you need some action here, or you just update? All right, thanks for the update. All right, Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to change the agenda to move up 4.09 to be the next item in the interest of time and our guests that have been here for two and a half hours, that's my motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, okay, all right, council, consensus motion just to move item around, we appreciate the patience of ladies and gentlemen. All right, show of hands, all right, thank you. All right, good evening.
Mayor and council, thank you very much for giving us the time to speak to you today. I'm Kirk Windmuller, I'm the president of the National Special Forces Green Beret Memorial Foundation. Also have with me from our team William Wallace and Christian Sessoms, both of which are retired Green Berets that live right here in the great city of Fayetteville. And we also have Parker Lee with us too, and he is our legal advisor for real estate issues, so, and he's also part of our team for this concept. I've had the pleasure of briefing most of you, or our team has, over the last few, few months. Some of you we haven't gotten to because of, you know, conflicting issues and work schedules, and I understand that. So I wanted to throw it out there that if you want a deeper dive on the project, we're more than happy to do that for you. We will go to great lengths to drop what we're doing and, and brief you up on the project. So today, I'm just going to do an executive summary of the project, just kind of the wave tops what we have, and as the guys are setting up the, we went old school on the briefing today here with easels and, and the big boards, but as these guys are setting up here, I'll go ahead and get started, but, so the National Special Forces Green Beret Memorial Park is going to honor the legendary, elite US Army Special Forces Green Beret soldiers of every era and the legacy of the Special Forces Regiment with a world-class National SF Memorial Park. So the park is going to be an enduring tribute to honor our US Army Special Forces soldiers, the Special Forces Medal of Honor recipients for their great commitment in service and the tremendous sacrifices they've made for decades and continue to make for our nation. So the National SF Park is going to be unique in the world, there will be only one of these world-class parks, and it's meant to rival any monument and memorial that's currently in our nation's, nation's capital. So the, the park is going to be a complimentary world-class enhancement, expansion, and co-location for the national, for the North Carolina Veterans Park One and Two, and the Airborne and Special Operations Museum, to attract increased visitors and tourism to the complex, and to honor our soldiers and enhance the historic legacy of Fayetteville as the home of the legendary airborne and special forces at Fort Liberty. So the National SF Park is going to consist of iconic sculpture monuments and memorial walls with bronze relief artworks that are going to portray the unique composition of the special forces that operate across the world, and it's as diverse as their missions working with indigenous partners around the globe in the geographic regions, including in North and South America, Asia, Africa, Europe, and the Middle East, and it also reflects the vibrant culture, history, and spirit of the city of Fayetteville. So the park is going to be a valuable enhancement for economic development and tourism to enrich the city of Fayetteville and its citizens, and help create some local jobs, hire local contractors, and bring customers to the businesses and hotels of the city of Fayetteville and the state of North Carolina. So the park is going to be a premier tourist destination experience with special events held year-round. These kind of events, such as retirement ceremonies, award ceremonies, promotions, graduation events that are typically held on Fort Bragg can all be done downtown and bring business, you know, bring business to the local, local businesses that are in the downtown area. And two more points here until I get to our requests. So we, right now, we have great support from the executive leadership, the general officers and the senior enlisted leadership that are at the Special Warfare Center and School, and the Army Special Operations Command, so we, we brief them regularly, they're excited about this project, and they, they are endorsing us, moving this forward. And lastly, I would say that we have a world-class artist that is leading this project, named Rebecca Clark, so she is the passion and the energy behind this project, so I didn't want to leave her out of this too. So world-class artists and endorsement from the community. So our request for you today, and our foundation, the good news is, we're not asking you for any money, so we're going to pay for, to build and maintain in perpetuity the world-class, multimillion-dollar SF Park. We are fundraising privately right now with major donors, and we intend to create an endowment fund of at least $10 million to help sustain the park for generations into the future. So what we're asking for is to lease the two parcels of land, and we've got it stood this way, oh, here. So if you look to the poster board to my left over here, so you'll see, it's approximately nine acres of land, so there's two parcels, there's an eight-acre parcel which covers the majority of the land there between Bragg Boulevard and Rowan Street, and then there's a one-acre parcel that runs along the wood line there, along the railroad track. So we're, we're asking for a lease on both of those parcels, so approximately nine acres, for, for long-term, so either 99 years or whatever the maximum allowable is by the, by the council here or the state of North Carolina. And we're asking that for a dollar and with an option to renew for the same amount, and to begin construction on the park within five years. So our request is to begin a lease agreement and memorandum of agreement with the council, and we've got, Parker Lee here has the draft term sheet for your lawyer to review. So that concludes my portion, I'd love to turn it over to you for any questions.
We appreciate that, and good to see you guys again, and this is, Mayor Protim submitted, it's under a council member request, which has certain rules with, for council, so, Mayor Protim, you wanted to, well, I think I had a couple of questions on your request, but did you have?
Councilmember Hare wanted to see if we could turn the cameras around so that the public could see these pictures.
No, yeah, I don't, I don't know if it could be.
Cameras could be.
All right.
That's right.
All right.
All right, and, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to make a...
Well, hold on, I think Councilmember Ingram had a question.
Thank you, nice to meet you. City Manager Hewitt, I know I asked a good amount of questions, and I also asked some questions about the Airborne Space Museum. Mr., what, do you have any concerns or information that you would like us to, to know or concerns about this project?
Don't say I have concerns, I do have history of this project, and it's, looking at it and having been here when this was discussed before in the various iterations, it is a very exciting project. But one of the things that, having been here when we opened up the Veterans Park, and the Veterans Park was originally slated to be somewhere in Cumberland County, and then Senator Tony Ran approached the city and said that, for a variety of reasons, some of it proximity, and some of it as well because of the ASOM and others, that there was a desire for us to move very quickly, and we all went to Raleigh, and we made a pitch to the General Assembly, and they granted us the money, and the city of Fayetteville made a pledge to the citizens of the state of North Carolina to build and construct a state veterans park, not for the city of Fayetteville, but on behalf of all citizens for all branches. Through the years, we have worked to develop a master plan, it was Phase One and Phase Two. Most recently, when the Grove Street Bridge was relocated, we wrote, I think the mayor actually signed a letter that went to NCDOT, asking them to go ahead and convey. This is not inconsistent with the overall effort, but it is a difference. We are still operating off of money from the state, we have some $730,000. It's probably been to staff's, a staff's fault that we have not come back recently with you with the designs that most of the council members had previously seen for the park.
Right.
But again, this is council's decision. In reviewing some of the minutes, and I'm not sure that this is true for this phase of land, but the council in past years had authorized us to acquire, condemn, demolish a variety of activities to build this. Again, not saying this is inconsistent at all, but looking at how long-lasting this is, and I have shared this with members of council who I've talked with, I would just ask that you give it, as you always do, a lot of deliberation, because there were, again, plans in place, and we're still operating and clearing the land, we were over there two weeks ago trying to make sure that the land was level, and I don't think, again, this is necessarily inconsistent with the overall goal, but this is not the state veterans park Phase Two.
And I want to, I want to follow up on something that you said specifically, because the state here recently has been really good to, to the city of Fayetteville, and I just want to put it in plain terms that when we asked for the conveyance of property, that was because we were getting ready to move forward on Veterans Park Phase Two with what was a, pretty much our plan, correct?
Yes, ma'am, as a matter of fact, I believe, Jody, was there a $3.4 million?
So, Mr. Hewitt, this is, this is still under a council member request, so we'll be on the five minutes, because we didn't explain that chart.
Well, I'm sorry, I was just answering councilmember's questions.
I got you, if you can do it quickly so we can get to a consensus.
Mr., are you going to finish?
Yeah, go ahead.
He said finish.
Yes, it did not go anywhere this term, but there was a request by a member of our delegation, I think, for $3.4 million to supplement what we have. Again, not inconsistent, but different than what the original idea was.
But the conveyance of the property came because of our request, correct? Thank you.
All right, let's see, I don't, don't see any further questions, Mayor Protim, this is your item?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to make a consensus motion, and one of the questions I have before I take the motion is...
With your mic on, sure. Oh.
Okay, all right. Colonel Windmuller, one of the designs included honoring all the services, so I want to knock that one out real quick, because as you... that one out real quick, because as you come on to the property, there'll be a, designed for all services to be honored, because I know that was a concern for some, for some folks. That'll be in effect outside the area of this particular arrow that you've got set up. Is that your understanding?
So that was one of the options that we were, you know, willing to work with the council on. If that was an obligation that we needed to meet with the, with the state, absolutely yes, we could honor the, the six services, including the Space Force.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you. That's, that's very important. My consensus motion is to have staff to develop an agreement with the Special Forces Memorial Park Foundation to lease the specific two properties for a dollar for a 99-year lease, city attorney, as long as that is allowed, and for the time, and then timeframes for milestones to be met. For instance, we're not going to give them any money, but they've got to prove to us, they've got to raise the money and then meet those milestones, and before everything can, you know, as long as the milestones are reached. So that, that's my motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Motion for, Madam Attorney.
As I heard Council, Mayor Protem Dawkins, he said there were specific, or there were milestones. Do you have specifics as it relates to those milestones?
I, I don't, Madam Attorney. What my thinking is, and I hope that you and the, and their attorney can come to an agreement, for instance, there'll be certain developments put in place, such as the granite structures and additional money. I'm, I'm struggling with the, how it needs to be worded. Um, sir? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if, if staff could just come back with suggested maybe milestones. For instance, this is going to be, what, a $40 million project, Colonel Winmuir?
Right, for, for the phase one, we're estimating close to $35 to $40 million, correct?
And then, are you prepared to make proposal to the city that, when the milestone would be reached where you've got $5 million, where you've got $10 million, and then certain number of years to reach those?
Yeah, we're certainly willing to do that, and I think the, the one date that we, that we wanted to put in the, in the agreement was the five years to begin breaking ground on phase one. Now, we don't think it'll take that long, but that would be the clawback period to where if we can't meet that obligation, you could take the land back, correct? So that would be, yeah, five years.
All right, so phase one, is that 10 million or is that 40 million? I heard you say 40 million in phase one.
So, yes, 40 million, and, and the 10 million number was for our endowment fund to keep the, the park going.
Oh, okay. Got you. City Attorney, is that acceptable? Thank you.
Okay.
That's my motion, Mr. Mayor.
So councilmember requests are used to, anytime staff is asked to be engaged for something, and so in this case, there's a consensus motion by Mayor Protem to ask staff, legal, and whatever other departments are necessary to work with, special forces group to come back, this will still have to come back for final approval of contracts, conveyance, and rules, and whatever the agreements are for council to vote on that. Counsel, any other questions?
Yes.
Do I need a second?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll get a second for consensus purposes. All right, so, second about Councilmember Jensen, so discussion, we have Councilmember Ingram and Hare.
Thank you. I, I just want to kind of recap something I stated to, to, something City Manager stated. Did you say correctly that staff is in the process of bringing back design for Veterans Park Phase Two, which is at this also proposed location?
We have a design, yes.
So I think we're putting the cart before the horse and horsemen when we, when we preparing to do this work, because what we're doing is we're exhausting not only our staff time, but also our city resources in, in work that we have literally gone to the state and said, hey, we're prepared to move forward on Veteran Park Phase Two, we got the land, and now we're going to do something different. And I remember when we got a significant dollar amount from the state, there was question about trying to do something different, and with the funding, and it was said to us, well, if we do something different, that can look ill will on our behalf. So I'm not, I'm not interested until we see what Veteran Park Phase Two is going to look like, based off of my experiences with what has been put before us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Ingram. Councilmember Hare, you had something?
Yeah, yes, sir, Mayor, because I, I, when I met with the group, I'm, and I'm still very, very much supportive of what's been proposed, and of course, one of my requests is that because of the location, that as we enter from the, I guess, what is this, the, the southern end of Merkison Road, that, and the culture of the corridor, that it has some culture that reflects the communities that it abuts up to, and that was a part of my conversation when I had that discussion with you all. But what my concern is, so please make that to be note as a part of your upcoming presentations as it moves forward, but this is where my, my, my problem is, and I'm just hearing this tonight, because we've been having these meetings with this group for, way before we stopped for our July break. I was not aware, I was always aware that that location was a proposal of the Veterans Park Two or Phase Two. Hadn't heard anything more about that until tonight. And tonight I hear that we have, we have a, uh, uh, plans, and I guess we have forms of schematics and drawings. We have an additional $700,000. That's to decide, and if, if we move forward and we don't get it, then I got a place for the, for the, for that $700,000. So I'm, I'm, that sort of confused me just a little, because we've been having these meetings, the notebook was in my mailbox in June. Okay, so I'm, I'm just a little, I'm a little thrown off.
Well, I, I think, Counsel, as we, as we try to wrap all this up, certainly, if, as the manager mentioned, if Senator Tony Rann was one of the, the participants, then we're talking a couple decades ago, and, and so, at least. And so what I, what I want to know, and I guess what the, the benefit of having staff look at this is, one, make sure it's consistent with any covenants that we have with the state, okay? That's, that's, that's the core of it. Two, what were our obligations there to say that it would honor, and what does honor mean, and, and, and what depth for the other branches? You guys don't have an issue with that, if that's the case, because I understand a part of that is some of the other branches. So some of the questions we're trying to get to would come out when and if there's a consensus to have legal review what our promises to the state were and come back to us with the terms of it. So I think we're trying to work through that here, but that would be something that, if it's supported. This is just typically councilmember requests are just for enough support to get to the next level, and that's what I'm trying to get us, get us back to. So there's a, is a motion on the floor for that? Any other questions outside of the scope of those things? So Counsel, let's look, let's look for action on this consensus request to have staff look into all of the concerns mentioned. All right, who didn't vote? Nine, one, okay. All right, so consensus carries nine, one, so look forward to working with legal and staff. All right, good to see you guys again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you for your patience this evening.
Mr. Mayor, before we go on with these special forces gentlemen here and their family, I can't control the mic, I guess Jennifer can, but we lost, we lost a great special operator, General Lindsey, and so I wanted to mention that. He was, I believe, the first special, he was Green Beret Vietnam, correct? Green Beret Vietnam, the first Green Beret to make four-star general, I believe. I'm pretty sure of that. I remember General Yarborough was a one-star. But, so I, I heard with you all, he was a great man. He helped crank up the Airborne Special Operations Museum and got that going, and so I wanted to make sure that General, Jumping Jim Lindsey was mentioned in our meeting tonight, because he really blazed the trail that you all benefited from as young special forces officers and enlisted men, and thank you, Master Sergeant Wallace. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. All right, Counsel, we moved to item 4.06, proposed amendment for boarded-up structures. Public safety. No, it's not. That's 4.08, y'all. Yeah, I'll skip 06, 07. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. James Rutherford, Housing and Code Enforcement Division Manager, and with me I have Chester Green, Senior Planner from Development Services Planning. We're here, back before you with the boarded buildings, text amendment for commercial buildings. It was, this is an update from what the council asked for from the last time this was heard back in June. Just, this is a lot of the information the council's already seen, it's in your packet. We've also provided you with an administrative report and a, a chart that we'll be going over here in a second. This, just to kind of give one's memory a refresh, I'm not Derek Planter. Mr. Thompson thought Mr. Planter was coming tonight. No, no problem, but he does work for, for me in code enforcement, and he does a great job. You'll see him later this month, hopefully. February 6th, Mr. Hare brought the item. The council approved that, and about a couple, two weeks later, the Planning Commission voted to approve the text amendment. A month after that, it was presented to council for their consideration. Council asked that it be brought back to a work session, so it was brought to the June 5th work session, and a lot of the information was covered. Some of the key points in the boarded building ordinance, that it must be registered within 48 hours, a three-year limit, and failure to register would result in a civil penalty to the owner, and it doesn't preclude any other actions from code enforcement. So if the building is substandard or dilapidated, has other issues, that, that being registered doesn't prevent us from doing anything to, to stop that motion from going forward. Since 2015, we've had 535 residential boarded building cases. Thirty-nine are still active, and we did a survey to, survey for commercial boarded buildings. We found 32. This is back in March. We brought some examples, some pure city, basically one other, only one other pure city out of 11 has an ordinance that requires commercial buildings to be registered, that's Durham. Most of the others have no boarded building registration standards at all. So that brings us to where we're at today. Counsel asked for more information regarding the 32 buildings that were on the list. What would happen to them if the owners decided to do a demolition? Would there be possibilities of redevelopment, or what would stop them or prevent them, or what, what impacts would hit them? So what we did was, the list was sent out to Planning and Zoning, Engineering, Traffic Services, and the Department of Transportation, and they came back with some comments on, on the different properties, and Mr. Green will cover that for you.
So, good evening. Just like to start, this list is the 32 buildings that, you know, are, were seen to be boarded, but none of the issues on here have anything to do with boards on the building, meaning that all these things would apply to any building, whether it was boarded or not. Out of this list of 32, 20 of the structures could be rebuilt exactly in the same footprint, meeting the current zoning and requirements. 10 of the structures could be rebuilt on the same parcel, either with a variance for a setback or by slightly moving the building to a different location on a parcel to meet all the setbacks and parking requirements. And then there are two buildings, two structures that could not be rebuilt really in that footprint, or require a lot of variances, more than what would be normal. Those two properties that are on this list, the main reason why they couldn't be rebuilt is just because of past DOT right-of-way acquisitions. They just took so much property from the front of it that the building is almost in the street. So that's, you know, basically it for these properties, so, you know, most of them can be rebuilt, all but two with no or very little additional, you know, approvals. That brings us to some of the options. Since this is, amendment has already had a public hearing, the first option is to direct staff to bring it to a city council meeting for your vote. Some of the benefits of that, James will go over.
Yeah, the, basically enacting a commercial boarded building ordinance standardizes how we treat all boarded structures in the city. That would be a positive motion. Also, it would set a three-year, based on the current amendment, it set a three-year limit on how long those buildings could be boarded, so it would entice or encourage or force the owner to, to do something with the building, either just by removing the boards and correcting any deficiencies with the doors and windows, or to, you know, move forward with a demolition, or to move forward with a redevelopment. So those are all options that get you out of looking at the same boarded-up building for, you know, decades. So that's a positive option for number one.
Yeah, the second option is to direct us to do no further action. Just kind of goes away, and we don't do change anything or don't deal with the, making any new requirements for commercial boarded buildings, which, you know, would go against some of those benefits that we just said. And then the third option, if you do have specific changes or policy issues you want staff to review, you could send it back to staff, but staff has looked at this many times, so we don't have any other changes that we would, you know, recommend to look at. Since this is a council request, we don't normally make recommendations, but we do recommend that you move it forward for a vote up or down on the, the next council meeting.
All right, thank you. I have a couple of questions, and then I'll go to Councilmember Hare, Councilmember Hendros, and Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a lot of concerns and reservations with this. One question, out of the 32 or however many buildings on the list, do we know how many of them, if any, are hazardous structures?
There are about four or five that I've recognized as buildings that we already have other actions on.
And then on the, can you put this slide up or, no? Yeah, on this one. So the column labeled UDO issue at the top, is that like a code enforcement violation?
Oh, that would be meaning, that's meaning that it has a setback issue, the building's too close to.
Gotcha. So, some of, some of my reservations and concerns is that we're lumping all of these buildings in as simply a boarded-up structure, where I've, I've kind of wanted staff and council to kind of treat hazardous structure one way, and then structures that aren't hazardous another way, because a lot of times typically a hazardous structure, right, has either had some fire damage or maybe damage from a storm or something like that, that causes it to be hazard?
Typically with dangerous buildings, yes, some type of casualty, typically a fire, a vehicle strike, tree strike, something of that.
Sure.
And if we have that, whether they're boarded or not, we're still taking action on them.
Right, and that's kind of my point.
And being registered doesn't impact whether or not we take them as a dangerous structure.
Right, and that's kind of my point, in that a hazardous structure, in my opinion, it should be dealt with in six months or less, or as, as quickly as possible, because there's a potential, you know, either injury to, to persons or loss of life situation, whereas a, a building that's structurally sound, that has no code violations, that's simply boarded up, to me, is a different deal. is a different deal. I remember back in February, I expressed some of these concerns. And then back in June, I think there was five or six properties that we had photos of, and we looked at in June. And if you looked at those photos, most of those buildings had other code violations, like peeling paint and those things. So my point is, why are we adding more regulations for property owners instead of enforcing the ones that we already have on the books? So if it's, if the problem, you know, what precipitated this council request is like one or two properties, let's deal with those one or two properties instead of making three dozen people, three dozen property owners conform to yet another layer of, you know, ordinance. So that's just my, my opinion. And Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion to that effect.
I think I have Councilmember Hare down for that. But I have Councilmember Ingram has, and Jensen have comments or questions before that.
Thank you. So, which is what I expected of most of this is in my district. Are we, with the last decision that we made, vote that we made, this positions this, these properties to be in the three-year cycle of needing to rehabilitate, do whatever they need to do before we gather action? Yes or no? Is that, isn't that stemming from this conversation about the three years?
Three years is how long, if you pass the ordinance, how long they could be boarded once they're registered.
Correct. And so, when we made the decision, we pretty much hit a reset. So if a building had already been boarded up for five years, they now get three more years. So what I'm saying are these those properties now.
Correct. There is no current commercial boarded building ordinance. So if you did pass one, then they would be required from.
So we still have to.
To move forward.
Okay. We still have to set that, that year term. I thought we did it three years.
It is, it is three years.
But, so I thought in our last discussion, we set it to match residential.
Well, this is what the proposal is. Because the text changed, it has to go through what we're talking about. So I think that's, that was the plan.
Current amendment would do that, but it's never been passed yet.
Right.
So there's nothing on the books right now.
Okay. So I, in my perspective, I thought that we had passed it. Okay. So I, I want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly, since it, since it came up. And this is just the process of which I've witnessed, or at least I try to follow. When somebody says they're going to board their building up, and then we give them many options or much time to, you know, do whatever they need to do, but they leave it boarded, right? At the first term of them boarding their building, they may not have had many issues, correct? But over time, a building can create its own issues just by become, staying boarded. Would you agree to that for a number of years?
It, a lot of buildings that are boarded are, typically don't have the same level of maintenance as an occupied building. So.
So it will create.
That would probably be true, yes.
Okay. When we are experiencing fire, buildings that incur with fire, we tend to act on those more quickly because of it now being a hazardous property. Is that true? Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I understood the process because of the comment that was made earlier about how we move. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Hare.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. And ladies and gentlemen, council members, once again, when I brought this item, because I'm faced with this issue like all of us across the board, all of us across the city. The residential statute, we have a three-year, what you, what are you going to do with this property? It can't stay boarded up in the community indefinitely, okay? Which, which has already been stated by our team here tonight. It causes additional problems. And within the residential ordinance, it has the three years. And our commercial part of the ordinance is, there is no ordinance. There is no ordinance for, for commercial structures. And as we all love to say, what's my district and what's your district? In my district, I have a lot of boarded up properties throughout, from Riley Road to Merkison Road. And we need to put the same, or put some format for our commercial properties, just like we do for our residential properties. Because as just stated by our team here tonight, the longer they are boarded up, and the lack of maintenance and upkeep that that boarded building doesn't receive, the lack that it doesn't receive, we know which direction what happens. People are, you know, people are moving in it, they become dumping, dumping grounds, and on and on and on and on and on. So the whole purpose of this item and bringing it to us, I don't know what, three months ago, I guess, was to put some structure in our ordinance for our commercial properties. And staff brought back to us once again tonight to let that relate with the residential ordinances that we have on, on our books right now. So, Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we go with option one, and we direct staff to move forward with this proposed amendment through the process, and present to city council for approval. And that is my recommendation.
All right. So before we go there, I have Councilmember Jensen, and then I had a round two from Honduras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, a lot of my questions were answered by Councilmember Honduras. But I do have a question. So I'm looking at the old Kentucky Fried Chicken that is right here. And I'm going to go back to the same point that Councilmember Honduras said. I see that it's boarded up, but I also see things that are on maybe a building that I have that y'all would go insane over. I would get a letter in the mail to say that I have paint peeling. But behind there is somewhere, I don't know what this is behind it, but it has all the rust and things like that. And, you know, so I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't think, I think that we go by things so much sometimes that it just becomes a normal. Because I have noticed buildings that are boarded up, that you could find 20 different violations. But are they getting the violations? Are the owners getting it? So what I would like to see is, so we say to them, you have to paint it, you have to fix it up, you know, to make it, because nobody wants to see this coming through our city. Nobody wants to go down the streets and see this. So let's say they put, let's say the one, I'm trying to look at the one that is like a trailer. It's, it looks like an ice place. It's the first one, do you want to talk about? They didn't even paint the boards. And I see the air conditioner, is that a hole going in there?
It's a old car sales lot.
Okay. So I guess that somebody stole the air conditioners out of it. Have we cited them for anything?
We've written those properties for various code issues, solid waste. We do have a substandard, I think, on that particular building.
So I, I know if you hang a banner for more than like 30 days, I mean, you, you can get fined for like $500 a day. I'm not kidding.
I have a seat 18 inches in it.
Yeah. So when I, when I'm, and I'm not trying to be, I'm really not trying. But I guess my question is, have we gone to them and, I mean, have we sent these things and they're just totally ignoring it?
Well, this board up was fairly recently, so.
Okay. So then, so then my next question is, so let's say we pass the three years. They come in, they know they're getting their three years. And, and I'm very surprised that there was only two out of the 36, was there 30, 32 places, that only two couldn't be rebuilt because of rightaways and things like that. That was very surprising to me because I would think that it was more. So let's say they come in and they put windows in here, and they paint it up. And then a week later, somebody comes and tears down, you know, puts, puts a brick through the window. Are they allowed to board it up again and then have three years?
The ordinance caps it at three years. So I don't think you can take the boards down.
They fixed it.
And then, within a short timeframe, put, put the boards back on.
But I guess that's, one of the concerns is, they go in, they fix it, and then somebody, it's empty, because we all know an empty building doesn't get taken care of as well. And that somebody vandalizes it, and they board it up. Does that set the clock again?
There's no caveat in the current.
Okay.
Ordinance that allows you to restart the clock. It just sets it at three years maximum.
So I, I guess what my concern is on this whole, on the whole thing is, we have a lot. And, and I've, I've heard two people say that they have a lot in their districts. Is there any way that we can help these business, these owners to say, well, if you want to tear it down, let us help you, you know, let us give you, we, we, we do, but it's very hard to get. Trust me. So, that, that is the part that I'm saying is, you know, nobody wants to see all this. I get it. But we just have to be smart about it. And I'm going to have a hard time supporting that. Okay. Thank you.
All right. So I have Councilmember Honduras Benevente. And you all do know that there's a severe storm warning. You're still frustrated?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd argue that a vacant property tends to have less routine maintenance done, and therefore tends to, you know, fall in disrepair quicker, whether it's boarded up or not is irrelevant. Secondly, on that, can you put the picture back up that was just there with the boarded up? As I understand the UDO, that's, that's in code violation because you got peeling paint all over that building. So my, my point is, we can enforce what we already have on the books and take care of 90% of these problems. Also, can you put the, the Pure, Pure City, so this is one of my frustrations in a lot of the codes and ordinances. Why Fayetteville likes to put ourselves at a distinct disadvantage? There's no other city, with the exception of Durham, that even has one for commercial. So Raleigh figured out a way to figure it out. Charlotte, Wilmington, Cumberland County, Greensboro, all of these other municipalities are dealing with this in some other way. And then we feel compelled, and in Durham's situation, I'd argue that that's even worse, because it's at the, it varies per the registration. So it's at the leniency of whoever deems it. So one property owner could get 10 days, and the other one could get 10 years. So, but further than that, I have a question for the attorney. Would there be another public hearing for the proposed text amendment?
Would the proposal go in chapter 30?
No, it's 14.
Chapter 14.
Right with you. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Benevente.
What was the answer?
A public hearing would not be required, but certainly if the council wanted to have another public hearing, you could. Thank you.
Councilmember Benevente.
Mr. Mayor, did the city manager want to speak? I was just asking.
He's talked enough tonight. What you got, Mr. Manager?
In the beginning of time. So, yes, yes. And the mayor tells me, I don't know the Bible, so I better stop. I think that council, this has been something that the councils previously in this council has debated. We have 32 properties out of probably more than 200,000 structures, probably in the city. We have more than 60,000 single-family residential structures. We have probably hundreds, if not more than that, apartments and then commercial properties as well. So we just give a scale to this of 32, which are located in some of your redevelopment areas. This, this is different than traditional code enforcement. This is not necessarily designed to secure. It's also designed to try to spur, so that you don't have properties with the boards on the windows, which detract from the neighborhood for some time. We were all here when Mr. Harris had his dry cleaning on, on Merkison Road. And what a sad day it was when it went in receivership, and you could see clothes inside of it. And then it got vandalized. Then Mr. Hare, we had it, as you recall, scheduled for demolition. The owners came in and pleaded with the council to save the building. And they did just enough to board it up, and that's how it stayed. And that's likely how it will stay. We were here, many of us had lunch at the Kentucky Fried Chicken on Eastern Boulevard. And it has been boarded up now, somebody said, decades, at least 10 years. Absent some action, and this does not mean that they can't sell it, it does not mean that they can't take the boards off of it. And if there's an interest at the end of three years, if council something decides to move forward, if at the end of three years, you realize there are 32 businesses that now have to take the boards out, council could come back and revisit it then. But one of the things that we know, and that we see, when you look at the buildings that we're talking about that are boarded up, absent some other intervention, the people, there is no cost to maintain it. And so I, we're asking questions of staff, when have you visited the property last? Versus the property owner having responsibility for their property, to try to do something with it to better the community. And so it's council's choice. But really, I think the first one is, and I don't know that there's consensus, is, do you wish to do something with residential, I mean, commercial properties? If so, what's the time limit? Councilmember Honduras had proposed that it only be for dangerous buildings. We may not need that. We bring to you dangerous buildings, but as we see in times past, Mr. Mayor and others, that when we bring them to you, people come and pledge you that they're going to fix them up. And then we have issues that they don't. So I think this could send a message to the community, and to the business owners. And it's nothing that would happen today. People would have, if you enacted, they would have three years from the date that you enacted, before there would be some action. They would have to register, but it'd be some, three years from that date for which us to see. But my fear is that if, if you really are interested in redeveloping and trying to spur some development in some of these areas, the 32 properties that we see, there's nothing that we, other tools that we have on the books to stop them from keeping them boarded up. Some of the other cities, you're right, we would be an anomaly compared to the other cities there. But some of those other cities have seen historic growth in areas they've not seen them before. We have not.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right. Councilmember Benevente and Banks McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to resolve two things. You said, sir, earlier that there was about, maybe about five that were hazardous, and that we could.
We have cases on yet.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that you have a means of dealing with those through code enforcement, to hurry them along, even beyond the three years. Because that probably needs to get taken care of in, much less than three years, those hazardous ones.
Typically, yes.
And you have a mechanism currently to do that.
Yes, we have substandard dangerous plight.
So I'm trying to resolve that with city manager. You were saying that we don't have a means of resolving even just the pay, the peel, paint on the thing. We can get people to do things just based off of other code enforcement things. So I guess, I am concerned about city, Councilmember Jensen's comment about if someone in all due diligence is doing their best, two years and 11 months in, and then unfortunately, an act of God tears their stuff up. You said that we could maybe do something for them if it's a special situation like that?
Well, the only thing that this ordinance, so the amendment that is proposed would do would be in three years, they would have to take the boards off. That, that's the only thing that this would require. There'd be a registration in three years, they would have to take the board off. Many of you remember when we had the issue with big boxes, and we never really settled on that. How do you go back and retrofit a Walmart at Merkison Road? Many cities and communities, I don't know if they still do it, have put up a bond that if the building were not used for the stated purpose after a particular period of time, there was a bond that either tear it down or redevelop it. That's what you're seeing on Merkison Road. You are not going to have redevelopment in some of these areas until the council takes, not the council, until we have more developers.
Yes, sir.
And, but there are mechanisms. But I'm not advocating one way or the other.
Yes, sir.
But this has been something that the staff has brought in, we're just.
Understood. Understood. Well, that answers my questions at the very least that I potentially, in, in a very unique scenario where it's truly not the fault of the commercial business owner, we could do something for them. Or do we need to add that to the language of the thing with a clause? City attorney?
At the, um, council, if that is an interest that you have, we could definitely report back on it every year.
Okay.
To you, how many buildings were added, how many would come off. And it definitely at the three-year window, when those, if council proves it and moves forward, um, that we would come back to you and say which ones and decide how council wants to take action at that point in time.
Okay. It, once it becomes a problem, we'll deal with it. I got you. Um, well, I mean, I, I just, I, I'm, I'm all for having these buildings updated. It's a great thing for my area and District Three and District Four. I, I love this idea. It's just really interesting because I know traditionally, we're, we're very concerned about commercial property owners, what they want most usually prevails. And I'm surprised that in this case, we're doing something different, which I don't know. I guess I'm cool with that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, you, you're sleepy, so that means it's time to go home. Councilmember Banks McLoughlin.
Thank you. What is the, or do we have a current timeframe currently? We do not, correct?
Yeah, for commercial buildings?
Yes.
No, not for boarded up. There is no standard that requires them to register a boarded building that's commercial.
Okay. I... I somewhat support it, but my, my big issue is the time. And I think three years is a lot of time. Um, within three years, if we have just across the city, um, buildings being boarded up, eventually our city will look like a slum city. I mean, I've been in major cities, lived in major cities and throughout the area, you see houses boarded up, businesses boarded up. And that's my fear of our city just, the entire city, well, half of the city being boarded up. So I would support if maybe we can look at maybe two years roughly, but I think we should definitely push, um, the assistant program that we have to be able to help these, um, business owners and residents. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mahendros, is that your hand? I say again. Are you kidding me? Yeah. Quickly, sir. Quickly, quickly.
For me, it's, it's a property rights issue. And it's no different than a vehicle. The, the U D O can't compel a, a, a vehicle owner to have a vehicle in working order and registered. Now, there's other things in there. You can make them have three inflated tires and those things. But if it's parked in my driveway and it, you know, it meets the other ordinance, then that's fine. This is no different. If this, if this, uh, property, if a building is not hazardous, how do you tell a property owner what they can and can't do with it? I mean, it's just that simple for me. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Here.
Um, and Mayor, I'm really ready to move forward.
Thank you.
But I just want the council just to go back and read through your memory of the presentations that were made to us by community development. Community development says that it take, if, if these properties, for example, are demoed, it's going to take a certain period of time for that business owner, okay? And he said it gave us many different points of how long it can take. And so we want to support that also. And that was the reason why, uh, they were proposing and it stuck with the three years on what we could do to help that business owner or that property owner.
Got you. Thank you. All right. So with that, uh, council need some action on this item. Uh, council...
Yeah, I made a motion.
Councilmember Here?
Yes, I already made the motion.
All right. Okay.
Yes, the, the motion was that we would follow option one and that we would direct staff to move the proposed amendment through the process and present to city council for approval.
So it's consensus motion by Councilmember Here, second by Councilmember Thompson. Uh, we've had ample discussion. Council, I look to you for action. All right. Motion carries seven, three. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, council, moving to item four point oh seven, Public Works Commission Appointment Discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, were you going to open it anymore, sir, or you want me to move forward?
No, you the, uh, appointment commission chair. I think just to recap, council members, this item had went to the appointments committee, who you can share what their recommendation was and how it got back here.
Yes, yes, sir. Uh, at our last meeting, which I think was in June before our break, um, this item did come up. There were no recommendations that came out of the number of applicants that we already had. Uh, and then also, so we decided that we would, so, so no, um, nomination came out for, uh, a, the Public Works Commission appointee. So we thought we would go ahead and just close it out and bring that forward to council. Then, uh, we've had one of the members or one of the applicants, if I'm not mistaken, to have gotten sick. And that will, I don't think we need to go ahead and just maybe , uh, pull that name off together. So Mayor, I would like for us to move forward to reopen, uh, the nominations for the Public Works, uh, Commission Appointment.
All right. Uh, questions, comments? Uh, Mayor Protem, I see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my guidance is we bring, I thought the agreement was we'd bring them all in and they'd all get maybe two minutes and they all speak to the council at a future, uh, meeting or work session. That was my understanding. Um, I don't, I think we got six or seven nominations as far as I can recall from that June meeting. I think there's, um... It'd be easier to appoint a Supreme Court Justice. Let's see, the packet is forty-eight pages long. So we have six according to Chairman and Dean, DJ Hair, minus one. But just because they're sick, as long as they're not deathly ill, they should be considered unless they've requested to be, um, removed. Incapacity. Oh, they're incapacitated. Oh.
All right, Councilmember Banks McLoughlin.
Thank you, Ma, um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm not in support of opening it back up. Um, I think that'd be unfair to those who actually applied for those position. However, I'm open to interviewing and having a few minutes for interview, but I'm not in support of opening it back up to the public, well, application process. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Jensen.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and I, I am supporting what Councilmember Banks McLoughlin said because I thought that we were, that there was a vote that we were going to consider who, um, we were going to start early with the P W C because as Mayor Protem says, it seems like it's easier to do a Supreme Court judge than for us to do P W C appointment. You know, my position hasn't changed. I, I see two or three that are very good, um, candidates in there, but I will go with the council.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, uh, Councilmember Mahendros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, this was, uh, a council member request I had submitted for us to, as, as council, uh, member Jensen just stated, to start the process a little earlier. So maybe we can, um, having appointee on time. Um, by my count, on the packet that's, um, attached to our work session agenda, there's seven applicants. So if one is, uh, no longer able to serve for whatever reason, that still leaves six good candidates that got their application in on time. So I say we move forward, whether that's having interviews or however we want to go about trying to come to consensus on our appointee. Thank you.
All right, council, any other comments, questions? So the only, only, uh, only hesitation I had about it, uh, Councilmember Mahendros, you, you, you brought this in as a council member request, um, and the period was open at a kind of unusual time for, how long was it open for? Was it ten days, seven days? Because I, it, it came as a result of your, of your quest. No, what, was it thirty? No, it wasn't, it wasn't thirty?
Yes, it was.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay. And when was it opened up, uh, Madam Clerk? You remember? Yeah. No, it was, it was in February or March or something, right?
No, I think it was, I think it was June.
June. Okay, all right. Uh, yeah, uh, Councilmember Jensen.
I just had a question. Uh, it, it's okay.
Everybody is. All right. Any other questions, comments, council? All right. So, uh, council, I think I heard one of the recommendations were to bring applicants in for interviews. Is that right? I'm just throwing out proposals to move us along. Try, Councilmember Ingram.
I'll get, I'll do the consensus because I, I think if anything, I've been, um, true to the, this process. Um, I'd like to gather consensus motion that we bring current ac, applicants who are able to attend in for interview. And if the council still is not able to make a decision, then we revisit.
All right. Can, a second about Councilmember Mahendros. All right, council, let, let to you for action on this. Yeah. All right. So we'll get with the clerk and start scheduling those. Thank you, council. Moving to the brief city manager's update. He's been updating all night. Mr. Hewitt.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we, um, um, leave this topic, I know that for the last several P W C appointments that the council has expressed a desire to have interviews with the candidates. Is that something that you would like for us to, or staff to just make part of the process that you have for the six? Or is it something that you're going to decide every appointment you have? How would you like to proceed?
Well, I, I think that, uh, that's a question for a different day. We're ready to hear from the police chief, but...
Our next meeting, you ask the new CEO to come in and introduce themselves, please.
I'm sure he, he will be happy to do that.
Thank you.
So, um, as we pivot to the, um, public safety update, um, Chief Braden is here. And, um, we also have, um, Brooke Redding and other staff members who will be able to fill in and add, um, information on topics that you may have. But primarily, this was for, um, uh, discussion of the, um, fatal incident that we had over at, not fatal, the unfortunate incident we had over at, um, Seabrook most recently. So Chief Braden.
Well, I'll try to be brief but thorough. Uh, over the past four months, we've been out in the area in Murkison Road and Jasper Street with our Faith in Action program. Some of you have stopped by and seen that going on. For the past four weeks, we've been out at Seabrook Rec Center doing our PAL Safe Space for our Kids to Play program. And two weeks ago, we had our PAL, uh, uh, summer camp out at Seabrook Rec Center as well. So cops have been in and around Seabrook over the past month and a half, time and time again. Last Tuesday, we went out and we celebrated National Night Out where I actually spoke at the Seabrook Rodell, uh, 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 community watch groups at the Seabrook Rec Center. And then Wednesday night, going into Thursday morning, this is what many of us woke up to see. Uh, and, and I don't think that we can argue that, that any city, if this had happened in that city, it would have made that, that media market, they would have been the front page of the news or, or the, or the eleven o'clock headline. So the questions I asked that night as we sat and we were removing this car from the swimming pool over there at the Seabrook Rec Center is, could this incident have turned out differently had police been notified of a disturbance prior to the shots being fired? This wasn't an incident where just out of the blue shots were being fired. There were things that led up to this incident. Uh, people were in the area to celebrate, uh, uh, have a balloon release for a memorial for someone who had suffered violent crime himself. Uh, there was an argument on site. Uh, tempers were heated. I think there was an opportunity had the police called that an intervention possibly could have deescalated some situations. And then, uh, but, but not a single nine-one-one call came until the first shots were fired and the car was located in the pool. When officers arrived on scene, they found, they saw the vehicle in the pool as you see it here. And there was a victim lying in the middle of Slater Avenue who was bleeding. Uh, by that time, most of the witnesses had already fled the area. We had to rely on our camera systems and the camera system of Seabrook Park to help us start, begin to piece together the investigation that, that is still ongoing today. Uh, we've had multiple detective units working multiple hours throughout the night on Wednesday and well into Thursday morning and still looking, making trips to Chapel Hill to follow up with victims and obtain statements. And, uh, and that, that caused me to ask this question. Could this investigation have progressed, progressed further and faster with the community's cooperation? You know, these are the things that I'm thinking about as, as a police chief. How do we improve those things? And, and as I told you, we've been out at Seabrook Rec Center for the past month and a half, every day, camps, safe spaces, talking with the kids, national night outs. Uh, several, uh, community watch members meet at that location. So just the mere presence of police didn't make that place safe. You know, we're going to have to change the hearts and minds of the people within that community. One of the things I actually spoke about with all the youth as we talk about the safe space, there's a time, uh, during that time where they can play basketball, board games with cops. They actually come through and there's a talking and listening session in there. Uh, as I've talked and other detectives and police officers who have attended these programs, talked to the youth, what we found is the commonplace cause of violence, specifically amongst our youth, lies in social media. Whether someone disrespected someone based on a post that they made on Facebook, whether someone, you know, made fun of someone's girlfriend on Instagram, uh, it, it appears that a lot of the fights, especially at that teenage age, are, are a result of some kind of engagement on social media. Another thing that we found through conversations with our youth is that at the school level, at school, fights are predominantly between females. After school, off school property is predominantly, that's where the males tend to fight. Okay? And a lot of these interpersonal conflicts end up with a lot of shoving, shouting, and then guns being drawn. What I did is I wanted to provide you guys with a, uh, an actual snapshot of where we sit as a city. You will get the second quarter report, uh, either late this month or early in September. But thi, thi, this is not a snapshot from the first quarter, the second quarter. This is, was our comstat meeting live this past Wednesday. If you look, citywide persons crimes were down two hundred and forty-five for a total of nine point seven percent change from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. That doesn't match the narrative of what we, what we saw happen at Seabrook Park this weekend. If you look at citywide property crimes, we're down a total of nine hundred and sixty-five incidents for a total of thirteen point four percent across the board. Okay? And if you look at citywide society crimes, this is the proactive police work that the officers are doing. We're up a total of four hundred and ninety-eight incidents or, or, or contacts where we made a seizure, a drug arrest, you know, encountered a prostitution type investigation. Four hundred ninety, four hundred and ninety-eight incidents for a total of sixty-one point five percent increase in those across our city. So I would say that the Fayetteville Police Department is putting in work. I would say that, you know, the drop in citywide persons crimes, the drop in citywide property crimes, and the overall increase in the work that the officers are doing on a day-to-day basis is represented within this graph here. If you look at the bottom, I can break that down to the individual districts. As you all know, there's three districts within our city, Campbellton, Cross Creek, and Central. And if you look at the percent change, every one of those are carrying a decrease in crime and an increase in actual proactive police work for each district. So it's not one district that stands out. It's not one district that we have predominantly most of our problems in.
If, what did you say crimes against society were?
Crimes against society are the proactive police work, the drugs, the prostitution, the weapons possessions, things of that nature. So I know, I know just saying that, that, that persons crimes is down across the board, that doesn't illustrate to you guys, to, to the council what that means. So I broke it out. Homicide. Homicide is the one category you'll see that we're slightly up. In twenty twenty-two, at this given time of the year, we had twenty-seven total homicides on the board. In twenty twenty-three, we have thirty-three.
Twenty twenty-one, we had thirty-seven.
Correct. That was the year that I think we ended up with close to, was it forty-seven or forty-eight total? Okay, that was our highest year to record. Okay? So that was, in comparison to last year, we're up by, uh, six total homicides so far for twenty twenty-three. But let's look at ag assault felonies. This is where someone shot, stabbed, or beaten. Okay? We, we're down from a hundred and seven to eighty-seven. Look at ag assault misdemeanors. These are the less serious offenses. If someone struck, they're punched, they're hit, they're assaulted in some way. We're from two sixty- We're from two sixty-four down to two nineteen. Ag assault domestics. We talked about this early in the first quarter. You know, that this was something we were playing, placing a lot of emphasis on based on the increase in ag assault, uh, homicides to close out twenty twenty-two. And seeing some of the trends leading towards that, uh, the rise in aggravated assaults and homicides for domestics in twenty twenty-three. Right now, there is a slight increase from two oh-two to two eighteen, but I think a lot of our efforts that we placed, uh, we put in place have, uh, kept that number from being much higher. Look at shooting into occupied dwelling from ninety-eight to eighty-three. I know we talk, we always talk about your, I keep up with the social media. I see what people post on our Facebook page. I hear what they're talking about. They talk about us every day. And it is. There are quite a few incidents, but as you can see, according to the numbers, we even have a slight decrease in our shooting to occupied dwellings. Shooting into motor vehicles, down as well. So when I say violent crime is down across the board, I'm not just saying, you know, the communication of the threats or that someone threatening somebody on the side of the road. I'm talking about our most serious of events to include our shootings, shooting to occupied dwellings, aggravated assaults, both felony and misdemeanor. And yes, we're still out there working, solving every homicide that we can and trying to prevent any retaliatory violence that could result in a potential homicide in the future. There's been several questions about weapons. We know that these shootings are the things that, that, that concern us, that are a great concern and drive our violent crime perceptions. In twenty twenty-two, there was a total of five hundred and ninety-six firearms seized, confiscated, and placed into our city evidence. So far, for the same monthly marker, in twenty twenty-three, we're at seven hundred and seventy. If you look stolen handguns in twenty twenty-two, we reported three hundred and forty-three at this time of the year. We have a slight decrease in reporting of stolen handguns in twenty twenty-three at three hundred and sixteen. That's, that equates to a thirty percent increase in the number of weapons seized and an eight percent decrease in the number of weapons stolen. Okay? And I think, again, that goes back to a lot of that proactive work, those crimes against society and the proactive work that the police department does on a day-to-day basis. Lastly, I, I, I've been asked several times, uh, over the past several days, what are we doing about violent crime? You know, uh, we're a member of the local Southeast Region Violent Crime Task Force. That's a combination of all the police departments and multiple agencies within the Southeast Region of, of North Carolina that work together in order to address and influence the violent crime within their jurisdictions. We know that Hope County, we know that Robinson County, we know that Hope Mills, we know that Spring Lake. The criminals who operate within those jurisdictions also travel through ours. You know, there's been many incidences, incidents where there's a shooting, specifically one, there was a shooting in Hope County where the suspects were, uh, are suspects in a murder case here in Fayetteville. You know, as the chief of police, I recognize that I may have to so- solve a shooting incident out in Hope County in order to solve the murder here in Fayetteville. Being a part of this task force allows us to work with those officers. You know, we can learn from one another, you know, increase their capabilities, offer to them some of the things that we utilize within our department, such as our NIBIN program, our forensic techs, and things that help us solve and prevent violent crime. Based on that task force, you know, I'm organizing with Assistant Chief Berg and, uh, and, and our, our federal task force partners, a PSN Violent Crime Conference to be hosted here in Fayetteville. Where we're going to bring in all those people from this region to talk about violent crime, to talk about how Spring Lake needs to have their guns put into the NIBIN system, how a gun tracer could lead due to actual felony charge based on us tracing the gun that's been utilized in crime back to its original purchase. So again, these are things that we're wanting to train officers within our region how to do in order to put together better investigations that affect the Fayetteville area. You know, I, I talked about earlier, the Seabrook Safe Space to Play through our PAL program. Those are things, that's where we had the conversations with the young kids about the fights in school, what spurs on the violence within our communities. That's where we learned that social media is the thing that, 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 that causes most of the acts of violence in school and lead to escalated acts of violence outside of school. Our Faith in Action Initiative, we understand that drugs, you know, it fuels a lot of the violence within our community. Whether it's someone robbing one another in order to get money to support their habits, or whether it's a drug dealer doing a home invasion and taking the drugs of another. Our Faith in Action Program helps people offer services to people who are either suffering through addiction or have been a victim of, of, of addiction in some way, shape, fashion, or form. We're currently working with EKG, uh, program to get that back in our Cumberland County schools. We know that it, you know, uh, COVID removed a lot of programs and a lot of interaction that we had within our schools. Uh, Ms. Fikes is working not just with Cumberland County schools, but with other agencies and jurisdictions who are trying to get similar programs started within their areas. We have been the model for the EKG program, uh, across the Southeast North Carolina. Our Violent Criminal Apprehension Program, uh, we've been sat on this floor in this room and given press conferences with, uh, with the U.S. Attorney, Mike Easley, talking about the violent criminals we removed from, from the streets of Fayetteville. Rick McIntyre has been a career criminal within our city for years. I had the pleasure of sitting in this room when they talked about his indictments. Najee Johnson has been, uh, uh, he has plagued the community with violent crime and drugs for the entire time I've been a police officer. He has been federally indicted and removed from our community. So we continue to work with our federal partners in the VICAP program. We continue to support them through our TFO officers and the investigations that we bring to the actual table. Some things that we've, we're doing differently. Okay? Every watch commander has presented a SARAH project to their chain of command. SARAH stands for the acronym Scan, Analyze, Respond, and Assess. Every lieutenant that works the patrol division has a project that they're working on now. Whether it's a club that we continually have calls for service for fights on that typically, uh, end up in shootings to specific areas of town such as Bonny Dune, where earlier in the first quarter of this year, we had two murders within about two months. So again, we're, we're holding our people accountable, our, our mid-level supervisors, asking them, what do they plan on doing to address the violence that's occurring in our community? We talked about our domestic violence response. We SARAH, Scan, Analyze, Respond, and Assess. And basically, it's just a problem-solving project. It, it allows us to work through a process. Our domestic violence response, I predict, I didn't predict, we saw, me and the other members of the Police Department saw what domestic violence was doing, closing out twenty twenty-two. We, we knew that we were up a quarter of our homicides were directly related to domestic violence. I think I reported during the first quarter of this year, about fifty percent of our murders were related to domestic violence. I'm not exactly where we're sure now, where we're at now, but I'll be reporting on that during our second quarter. But what it did do is it made us think differently. We went back and we retrained our entire department on how we should respond and deal with domestic violence. We've also partnered with the Phoenix Center, who I know that part of the budget money was, was granted to help assist them as they assist us in doing follow-ups with this domestic violence. So, uh, just taking it, uh, uh, a new look at how to deal with old problems is, is how we've responded to that domestic violence. Night shift detectives. People would think that this would be a given. You know, we, I now have ensured that we have, have detectives that are on duty, ready to respond to violent calls after seven PM. You know, we have a rotation now where if there's a shooting, there are detectives on duty that can go respond and begin secure crime scenes and begin those investigations without having to call someone from, from home from an on-call status. We have that, uh, seven, uh, not seven days a week. We have that six days a week now. Sunday's the only day that you actually have to call a detective in if there's a major incident. We're in the process of creating a repeat offender program. We didn't want to just throw something together. We're looking at some of the best practices across the states, across different agencies, and, and, and what's been proven to be effective in the past. We've had repeat offender programs here before. You know, we just didn't want to go back and, and, and create the same old thing. We wanted to make sure that we're looking to what the industry best practices. How are people doing it now in twenty twenty-three? Uh, we've placed an emphasis on drug-related violence, home invasions, drug robberies. We talked about those. And lastly, I want to hit on juveniles. Juveniles is something that, that, you know, is going to be a problem for, for us. And it's not going to be solved overnight or before this quarterly report comes up. Uh, I would take you back and remind you of, of the homicide which occurred on Bragg Boulevard. Uh, those were juvenile suspects, uh, two of them. Uh, they were taken in custody, but that wasn't their first involvement with the police. You know, there, there's a long history of, 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 of interactions between the police and those two individuals prior to the night of that homicide. You know, and that's something we're going to have to work with our, uh, DJJ, Division of Juvenile Justice, to figure out, how do we get juveniles into a secure custody or, or, or into some kind of program that prevents them from escalating up the ladder from just juvenile petty crime to carjacking, to robberies, and ultimately to murder? So again, these are all things that, that, that we're currently working on and, uh, we're trying to address as a police department. And, and I think that's sort of where I sit, and, uh, I don't know if there's any questions from.
Oh, yeah. So we do have a lot, Chief. We know it's late, but, um, I, I think that there's so much. I mean, this is, this has been helpful. There's so much that I'm sure a lot of us have that we will probably set a special meeting up to kind of zero in on some of this. But, uh, I'll start with, uh, Councilmember Benevente Ingram and Thompson.
Yes, sir. I appreciate you saying that, Mayor Colvin, because I do agree that it's, it's getting late and I want us to all be focused on this issue, but I also don't want to rush the discussion either. So if we can maybe definitely ask some questions tonight to better arm ourselves. And then maybe, there's a lot of solutions that we have sort of from past, um, council meetings uh, and other things, uh, that, that you've been made privy to recently that we can do that perhaps later this week, maybe, hopefully not later this month, maybe later this week, we can have a special meeting just to talk about the solutions part of it. Uh, but very quickly, uh, Chief Braden, what was the response time once you finally got one related to the Seabrook incident?
I'm not armed with, I don't have that information directly in front of me. I didn't expect that, that question. I know that, uh, do you have any further on that one?
I was told they were sponsored within minutes because they would already been in the area.
And I think the data is loud and clear. You know, you, you're having an impact on the vast majority of the crimes that we're seeing in our city. And, and, and this is the question, despite what I think some people say about their concerns of safety, you're not really at risk of homicide unless, you know, you're just, just walking down the street, you know? Perhaps homicides in the city, if you're engaging in certain activities, you know, certainly, you know, that, that increases your chance. But the homicides we're seeing, if you can tell me, are mostly interpersonal disputes, domestic or intimate partner violence, and then potentially some self-harm. Could you say more about, you know, or speak to that and whether or not people should really be afraid to go outside if, if they're not really involved in gang activity?
No, I, I think, I think we've been clear on that one. You know, uh, there, there are certain behaviors that, 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 that increase the chances of you being involved in some kind of violent crime. Uh, I think you hit on those. Only one I would add in there is, you know, that we talked earlier about the drug, home invasions, drug robberies, things of that nature. So, so yes, you know, I, I, I think the average citizen who's just going out to eat at Mica Cita's on, on a, on a, what, Monday night is going to be safe. Yes.
Oh, I know previously we said there was a lot of car thefts that were leading to the possession of guns and, and people who don't need them in their hands, and that's the way they're getting them. Is that still the primary, uh, way that, that young people are getting a hold of them, or is it potentially unsecured arms in the home, or is there anything you can tell us about that?
So I, I, as the graphic showed earlier, if I can get back previous, uh, we're, we're not down a lot, but we have made a small impact in the actual thefts. We've actually placed emphasis on, if you'll notice, uh, and, and that graphic's not in here, we're actually have a decrease in that, in, in motor vehicle being used. But by the same token, we've seen an actual increase in motor vehicle thefts as certain TikTok trends have taken off, as certain cars have been presented more vulnerable than others and, uh, and, and things in that nature. How are they getting their hands on the guns? We, we, we live in a society where, where, where guns are plentiful. You know, uh, as far as the thefts and things of that nature, uh, the numbers say what they are. But, but I would say that no, the average eighteen-year-old has to be obtaining it from some illegal means because if they're eighteen, they're not eligible to be able to possess a handgun. So they're either obtaining from friend, family, or from another teenager, another juvenile, another gang member, another, whoever has that option to give them those weapons.
You talked about how often FPD has been in and out of that area, whether it's through PAL or just generally with different community events. And at the same time, you asked that question about cooperation or the lack thereof. I think this is where, I think maybe I'll just start with this to counsel, we've got to start thinking of ways to allow folks to speak on these issues, to get them the resource they need, but without potentially the threat of them getting in trouble. And I think that's always going to be a concern if the only avenue is, you know, uh, law enforcement. So I, I, I feel like you guys are doing everything you can, and so this is not to say, you know, to blame y'all, it's just, we've got to try something in addition.
So, and, and, and I think me and you have had this discussion before. I'm not morally opposed to a lot of things that you recommend. But once a shooter has occurred.
Sure.
I have, I have a Kia Optima in, in Seabrook Pool, and I have someone bloody and shot on the side of Slater Avenue. I have to divert my attention and all my assets and resources into solving this crime and restoring the order to that roadway, that community, that park on that night.
I guess I, I just don't want us to keep waiting on everyone to get on board with that police as the only way to, to contribute to resolving these issues. This is from the community's perspective because clearly that's never going to be enough. The last thing I'll just share is that, you know, there's some great mentoring groups that exist in the city. I met with about a dozen, um, young men, um, right after this incident, who typically utilize, uh, the rec centers. And the biggest thing that I got from them, asking them about issues of street cred, you know, clout, you know, all the things that are leading to these issues. I think the biggest thing I found out was that they don't really know how to resolve conflict outside of, you know, coming to blows or, or, or taking sort of, you know, physical, uh, action. I think there's something to that. I think we need to look, um, whether it's partnering with the school board or otherwise. There are processes, um, to help teach, um, conflict resolution through circle process, restorative justice circle process. I mean, there's a lot of things that this, they don't have the tools necessarily. And, and I found that to be something that I think we should look into. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Got you, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, just one quick question, well, two really. I understand this was a drive-by. Do you have all, I know you don't have all, what, what have LPR helped in this situation?
So, so.
It wasn't a drive-by?
It was a conflict that started in the parking lot of Seabrook Rec Center. As, uh, and, and as guns were drawn, people began to leave, and that's when the shots ring out and, and our victim was shot. Outside of that, I can't give a whole lot more information, yeah, because it is an ongoing, uh, investigation and we're trying to determine who shooters were and things of that nature.
One other note, uh, you talked about, uh, car break-ins.
Before you answer that, yes, we utilized LPR heavily that night to help us solve and, and work the crime based on what we had at that point. If that's where you're going with that question.
That's where I was going. Uh, number two is, uh, Captain Strippé gave me a pamphlet about a vehicle that is susceptible to break-in that's all over TikTok.
Yes.
It's a Kia something. Can you let the audience know about that vehicle?
So, and that's something we're working on. Uh, Captain Strippé is actually working where we're gonna, we're gonna sponsor a work where, with Kia and Hyundai. Uh, there's a way that, and I hate to put too much out into the public, but if you remove the actual, the ignition, it can be started with actually any old jump drive, any USB drive that you put in there. Uh, there is some special software and some upgrades that, that Kia and Hyundai offer. We're going to partner with Kia and Hyundai and, 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 and have a, have a drive where, literally a drive, where we, we pull people in and we have those upgrades done to their cars just to ensure that, that they become less susceptible to be stolen, uh, from the side of the road. But yes, we're seeing where cars are, you know, Kias and Hondas are being targeted specifically based on that, that, the ease of gaining access.
Thank you, Chief.
Today.
So we, we've actually made, if, when we do a traffic stop where, where there's a Kia or a Hyundai involved, we're actually handing out a business card that has the actual, uh, the QR code where you can, uh, get information on how to get your car upgraded. Like I said, we're going to sponsor an event where they bring it in. Kia's right there. They run the, the upgrade to your car. They do the, uh, I believe it's just a digital they plug in and, and, and they do an update to your vehicle, which makes it less susceptible for those things. We've got the QR codes in neighborhoods. We've had little planner signs that we're putting out. We're trying to make it as, as easy as possible for people to have access to that information and actually help, uh, make their cars less susceptible to be stolen.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me say I'm very in support of there being some form of special meeting to have a deeper conversation. Secondly, I, I do, Chief, uh, and the Police Department, thank you for all that you, you all do. Right recently. Right recently, I've been reaching out to some personal friends that I have that are police officers in different cities and states with larger populations than ours, and just kind of idea sharing, and I learned that we do more than them in terms of community regard and bringing in nonprofit organizations and mentoring. We do way more than them, which was a shock to me. I've also asked some other council members in different cities, you know, I follow what they say, and I call and I ask them, what do you mean by that? How do you make that tangible? How do you make, in terms of public safety and this gun violence that we are experiencing? Because we are not the only ones experiencing it. However, we do have a responsibility to do all that we can to support. And so I think to know that we are going above and beyond with our leaning into our community members and truly exercising, you know, them, I know that you stated when that incident, and I'm going to use that incident because it's, you know, when that incident occurred, you have to focus about, focus on solving the investigation. And as I got calls about it from community partners, they were picking up kids, getting them to safety, which is what we want to happen, right? Is that something you enacted, or is that something that those community members on their own said, we need to go get our, get these community kids and keep them safe? And I'm getting to a point, once you answer that.
So, so that day, no, most of the people that vacated and left the scene actually left to their own accord once the shots started being fired.
Thank you. So, thank you. And to my, to my point, I agree that the police should not necessarily have to take the brunt of this. However, in my perspective, based on how I grew up and what we see today, we have to figure out, and I don't know if this can come from messaging of, of our marketing team, but we have to lean into our village mentality and truly being able to, and it sounds so simple, but honestly, we have to turn back and start becoming nosy neighbors, being all up in our neighbor's stuff. That's how I work in my community, but I, and it goes beyond that. I just don't know how else to formulate that, but to say, that's exactly what we have to do in terms of how we live. We all up here live in very different communities. I can hear gunshots from where I live, and I know who, exactly who to call of the neighbors. So I don't know if that's something we can try to formulate. Last year, some council members and we got together and we did PSAs about the amenities in the city that we could lean into for safe spaces. But I agree that you all should, you all should have to focus on the business of reacting and also being proactive. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so thank you, Councilmember Ingram and council. And council, just to bring you a breast, I did over the weekend speak to the Metro mayors, include Raleigh-Durham, Charlotte, Greensboro, Winston, and Asheville. So we have a conference call tomorrow to talk about some things. Also, looped in Attorney General's office, so some of the things that I'd be proposing, I had mentioned this to the city attorney, so it hadn't been vetted legally, but I agree with you, Councilmember Ingram, and Benevente, and others that have said this, this cannot be solved by your department. I don't care how many police officers you get, I don't care how great a job you are doing, and you guys are doing a good job, you cannot be expected to solve the woes of the problem of gun violence, right? And so there's going to have to be some accountability and some changes by everybody, including, as you said, parents, including some of these nuisance facilities that you got a lot of calls for shots, I heard you say that the night in your report, clubs you go to regularly for gunshots. And so council, one of the things I'll be asking the considers, let's expand and increase the enforcement of our nuisance ordinance, that we declare and determine that there are nuisances in place where we have repeated calls of service there that a lot of the stuff stems from. You know, also some of the landlords have a responsibility to the stuff that takes place on their premises, especially the public housing places that the city or government pays for. Maybe we look into that. And then also too, that chain of custody of these weapons that you're finding, I heard you said a neighbor system helps you track it if you enter it in or they participate, where the gun is coming from, who bought it for the 18-year-old, and how many people have touched it, who is responsible for securing it, that we can go after civilly, not necessarily trying to infatuate law because the General Assembly puts limits on that, but it's costing our city taxpayers time and money to send you out here to respond to this stuff.
We do actually have a gun tracer position. We're trying to get that actually filled at this point in time. So that is a position that allows us to find the history of a gun.
So, so I think cities like, there's precedent for, Council, Senator, Philadelphia's done it, Kansas City has done it, New Jersey has done it. There are a number of cities who have turned this into more of a civil matter, that they hold them accountable, just like kind of, you know, people did class action, action. And that's the discussion with the mayors tomorrow to see if they can take that to their legal team and see where we go with it. But I would like to, as Councilmember Benevente said, let's, you know, determine, I'll get Ms. Pam to see about a special meeting time that we can get a little bit more detail into what you're saying, Chief, and to come up with some proposals that we can start to, you know, to really take our city back with some of the policy changes that I think. So, good discussion tonight. Council, anything else for Chief?
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and same for me, Chief. A thumbs up to all that we're, that our police department is doing. What has been the, what's the word I want to use? The type of improvement we have received from using the integration of the doorbell, the neighborhood doorbell cameras, and what they see in neighborhoods as far as crime goes? How helpful since we've been doing that, what is it, feces, fosses?
Feces.
Feces plant, how well we've been doing with that?
So, if you remember, we will never have access to the actual doorbell cameras within a residence.
Correct, I understand, yes.
But what it does, it allows us, as those become more prominent within our community, it allows us more chances to catch things or suspect fleeing from an area, suspect fleeing from a neighborhood. Even if it doesn't catch the actual act, what it allows us to do is see who was leaving the area during that timeframe to start generating leads as to where we can begin our investigation.
Since we started, has it been very, has it been helpful so far?
Yes, the proliferation of cameras into our society, you cannot move out in public without being caught on camera at this point in time. You know, we talked about, you know, earlier, there was some conversation about the rec centers. Seabrook Rec Center has an abundance of cameras, and that was key and vital to our investigation. So, in addition to that, as we move, you know, what we utilize is those Ring doorbell cameras. We use those personal cameras, those security cameras on a private business to fill in the gaps of the pretty good, pretty robust camera system that we've created as a city that has been funded by council. So what we've done is we've created this big, this network, and what we do is we utilize a lot of the cameras that are at our front door at a residence or attached to a business to fill in those gaps. So they're all vital to the totality of the investigation.
Right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Bassett Glough, do you have something?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and Chief, thank you for the presentation. I did want to invite you to the Bone Creek Subdivision Community Watch. We're having our first annual prayer breakfast and appreciation fellowship. That's on October the 7th at 9:00 a.m. at the Fire Station 15, and all Cross Creek FPD are invited, as well as our Fire Department. So please come out if you can, and I'll follow up with you with an email.
You will. We've been out of Bone Creek several times.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Chief, thank you.
Sir, thank you.
All right, council, moving into five-minute request, I think we've already kept, conducted 4.09, special use permit ordinance. Council, I'll make this easy. Madam Clerk, you want to start my time? All right. So council, you know, we are brought a lot of items that are considered special use permits. You know, every duplex, every, every group home, every, every anything triggers a special use permit, it seems. But I wanted to see if there was a consensus to get staff to compare the number of triggers that we have for items that put us in these situations that where, you know, these become legal matters, or if some of these things can be resolved as a regular rezoning or another means than a special use permit, which has those statutory guidelines that we've found ourselves in the middle of litigation several times. So if we could look and see what it is that we have that triggers that compared to peer cities, that was, that was the ask tonight, not to try to solve it, but I know for a fact we have a lot of things that were probably put in place with good, well-intentioned, probably a few decades ago, but, you know, who knew we were going to have a housing shortage 20 years ago when they said that about duplexes, that every single duplex would come, you have to have a special use permit. So that's the request. So Councilmember Jensen, you have a question?
Yes. Yes, I'm ready to vote.
Oh, all right.
That was a yes, and let's do it. Yeah, do you, can you make the motion? Okay, I'd like to take a consensus vote that we move on.
All right.
I'm tired, y'all.
Then we move on. Let's get a little bit more specificity.
That we move on, I don't have it in my, what does it say?
For staff to...
Yes, let me get my iPad working.
Bring back the triggers for the special use permit.
I would like to make a motion that we review the number of requests which trigger the special use permits comparison to peer cities' required items.
All right. And it was seconded by Councilmember Benevente, I believe, so those in favor, councilists. All right. All right. Thank you, council. All right, we're moving on to the next item, which is shortened compliance and hedge bushes. Councilmember here?
This is a, this is a, I think this is really an easy item, team. We have conversations about compliance time. A lot of times I hear from my constituents and my residents, well, Mr. Here, we turned this in two weeks ago and it's still not done. So I was wanting to let our staff come back to us on how can we shorten compliance time when a violation is, is found? That is, no, this, these are two different ones.
So you're talking about period?
Just period.
Oh, okay.
Period. Uh, period, and I will delete from the other piece of that item.
Okay.
The compliances was, it was just a number one because it just, it always seems to take so long for an item to come compliant.
Just a quick question on that. Right now, what's the, what's the time for people to bring things back in compliance, Mr. Manager, or the process? Now they got an appeal time and something else and something?
It depends. It depends on the nature of the violation. And then again, someone said if they appeal, and, but it's Mr. Here, and I have discussed, and it's other council members, by the time staff actually finds it for a violation, it may have been sitting in the neighborhood for some time. So those are a variety of issues, but it really does depend on the nature of the violation.
So if his, if his request is granted, you can get some more specifics to that? What do you mean, and what are the factors? I mean, what are you saying?
If I'm understanding correctly, what staff would do would bring you back the various violations and essentially the flow chart or the time involved with enforcement for council to then review and decide if you want to, or where in the process you want to shorten the process.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for councilmembers' requests? All right. So there's a motion presumed by Councilmember Here to have staff review that, seconded by Councilmember Benevente. All right. Let's tee for action, council. All right, eight to one, okay.
Councilmember Mahndros Swiss again.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Mahndros is a no enforcement guy. All right. 4.012, Councilmember Benevente, no parking on Brunswick Avenue?
To establish a no parking zone on Yadkin and Brunswick, yes, sir. If folks were able to check out their, or check out the screens as well, you can see on the next slide, this is the intersection that I'm talking about, and Google Maps is, you know, even kind of revealing how longstanding of a problem this is. Folks who are not allowed to drive on base, maybe they got a speeding ticket, maybe there's a million reasons why, are using it as a park-and-ride lot, this entrance of Cottonade, as you can see from the entry, excuse me, from the neighborhood sign. And it's something that the city, the community there has been very disturbed by. They're cleaning up every week, all kinds of lunch, trash that's left around. Pardon me? Right, exactly right. And so we've imposed a, we put a sign up that said no parking. Unfortunately, no one is following that. And if you go to the next slide, actually, this is some of the lunch remnants that are there. It's just sort of this entire area is being treated sort of as like, you know, unregulated zone. If you go to the next slide, you can see where Mr. Gibson has already had to go out with his team and do some work out there, even beyond what the city's citizens have done. If you go to the next slide, like I said, this area has just been so kind of mistreated, there's even been a car abandoned. Thankfully, we've gotten that removed, but it just kind of speaks to the issues on this corner. If you go to the next slide, you can see how well the community has been working together to sort of work on this every week, but certainly the fact that the cars keep parking, keep having lunch, keep throwing their trash, it still continues to be a problem. If you go to the next slide, you can see how significant that problem is. And if you go to the next slide, you can see how excited we were to get the signs up. I asked our community members just to keep us updated on whether they had any impact, but if you go to the next slide, you can see that it really hasn't had an impact at all. So what I'm asking for, this was an issue similar to one that happened at FTCC, there's hull road and some houses there. Whenever students didn't want to pay for their passes, they would park in the neighborhood, and until they made it a no parking zone, they really couldn't enforce towing because they had the right of way. So similarly, I'm asking that we designate this a no parking zone in order to enforce towing on Brunswick and Yadkin.
All right. Any questions? Mr. Thompson, you have a question?
Isn't it, no?
So we tried to see if it would have an impact, and it hasn't. We have to make it a no parking zone for us to be able to enforce towing.
So the sign alone?
So the sign alone doesn't make it a no parking zone?
No, sir.
Then what was the purpose of putting up the sign?
To see if it would have an impact.
Thank you.
It was a waste of printed material.
Well, they're up there, so they're, they're working, so they'll stay up.
Okay. All right. So, all right, council, this is the last item, hung in there, so any other questions? All right, show of hands for the consensus, I'm sorry.
We do.
Yeah, machine. I was thinking about the old days before we had good technology.
It's too late, we passed it.
It looks like it, doesn't it? Looks sleepy and tired, so. All right, motion carries, so look forward to that. Yep, motion adjourned.
We have one more, sorry.
Oh.
There's one on the agenda on the back.
Oh, sorry.
So by them being, by enforcing, I'm assuming we would have a sign stating that the fines are...
Towing and enforcement. Something to tow in or something, yeah. Yeah. All right, 4.013.
Sorry, y'all, I'll be very quick about this one. Everyone knows that speed bumps have a very high threshold to be able to get one. I just want us to review all of our traffic calming measures, not dissimilar to what Councilmember Here said about reviewing, just what we've done previously with code enforcement timelines. What are some traffic calming processes that we can potentially speed up or readjust? So I just want information only back from staff to see if there's some changes that we can make there to better serve our community.
Councilmember Ingram, you have a question?
Yes, and I think it makes sense, but maybe this, I think this came before you were on council, maybe not the last budget, but the budget before, the council had an interest in actual traffic calming measures, and with the... And with the request for traffic calming measures, we added additional funding to the budget to look at other traffic calming measures outside of speed bumps, which came after a report received by our fire department saying that it slows them down. City manager, do you have any information that you could provide to this request?
If this one passes or even it doesn't, we'll go back and we will, um, honor that earlier request for information.
And, and staff mentioned that to me, that it's been done in the past, so they would bring all that same kind of information for alternate traffic calming measures other than, um, speed bumps.
But, so I know we put the money down, but did we get the, from?
At this, I'm not sure at the moment, but we will pull that for you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, yeah, we need a vote. No, we, we want to use our technology. All right. Most, most adjourned, all right. Good evening.